We're going to call to order the Thursday, December 9, 2021, meeting in Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Sirxina.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
All present and accounted for. Nice to see everybody here. Michael, great to see you and seeing that you're on the mend as well. And look at this great crowd. Thank you all for being here to join us tonight. I think everybody's here to hear about the airport, which is what we look forward to. If you'd be so kind to stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, thank you. Our next item is approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Approval.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Exposed. Agenda is approved. Okay, now is the time where anyone in the audience can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody here to do so? Pete, anything online?
For folks participating online, if you would press star six, if you're on the phone, to raise your hand. Otherwise, if you're using video, you can use the raise hand function. And if you click on the participant tab, separate window will open up and you can click on the raise hand. Mayor, I don't see any hands going up.
Thank you, Pete. With that, we'll move to the formal presentations now, and Matt, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a couple of recognitions to do this evening and wanted to get started. For Mayor Sirxina's last council meeting here as the mayor of City of Clive, I wanted to recognize you for your 18 years of service to this community. And the city council would like to present you with kind of a gift of their appreciation. And if you wouldn't mind coming down here for a minute on this side. I'm going to show it to them. I'll bring them over. Got it all figured out. All right. Mics probably won't pick it up, but I'll talk loud. So coming next year, the city would like to announce the creation of Sirxina Park in the City of Clive, the western part of our community. It's in our Shadow Creek neighborhood. It's a park that is currently being designed. And the city council and the Parks Board have been reviewing this, and they will be handing it to Sirxina Park in 2022. It's under actual planning. It's completion and construction in 2022. What we'd like to do is if we can with the council and the mayor, if you take a photo in front of the picture we got, actually photographer here, take a few pictures and recognize your last council meeting. And our design is for you to put this up on your wall, and then when the park is done, we would replace it with images of when the park is completed. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Why don't I say? And council, thank you. Let's take a picture, shall we?
I didn't put the suit on for nothing, Mayor.
Sorry.
So we can move the tripod around, but let's go ahead and have the mayor standing right next to the picture. A council employee and council detective sign over. Do you how many people do you need on each side? Thank you.
Just giving it out and just close.
Okay, we're ready. Go ahead and get a little bit closer. How about that?
Everybody looking at you. There we go. Here we go again. Guess anybody blinked one more time? Good.
Great. Now let's all look at Julie, so Julie gets all the shots she needs.
Okay.
All right, I've got one right here, too. All right, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. Great. Thanks, folks.
I will let you take that home tonight, but you have to bring it in a week to the, to the your reception that NCMIC, I wanted to recognize Mike McCoy, that is hosting that a week from tonight at their wonderful facility. So we appreciate Mike and Nick Mchosting that event. And one other recognition that we wanted to do this evening is for, there's another person in this room. This is their last city council meeting. Administrative Services Director Joyce Corgram has been with the city for 17 years. She came here as a deputy city clerk and has been the city clerk, and then is now finishing up as the director of administrative services. And as the city manager, the finance director is probably one of the most important relationships that I have as a city manager. And so I'm going to, it's going to, it's going to be hard to see Joyce go, but Elizabeth here, who's just started as well, and there's been a great transition in place. But we want to recognize the 17 years that Joyce has given to the City of Clive with a gift as well. It's very heavy. So we had an artist make this, and it is, if you can see, it's kind of a raindrop and the colors of the City of Clive. And so, and as you will see, the bottom recognizes your 17 years of service. So we wanted to present this to you, Joyce. It's very heavy. Slide over a little bit so we don't have, or this is there, go this way. That's how I get out of the way. A little bit more. Pretty good. Okay. Can I don't like flings one more? Perfect. Now grab one, too.
Twenty-one days to work on.
Just have a box without if you'd like me to take that for you now.
Transporter. All right. And I don't know if the city council or anybody would like to make comments on these recognitions, but those are my formal remarks, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. Counsel, you're certainly welcome to.
Well, I'll start off. You know, I've had a chance to know Mayor Sirxina since 1981. We go way back to the days of Baker's Cafeteria. And it's been a real pleasure for me to work with Scott for all these years. And I tell you, he's done an exceptional job. And, you know, I'm not going to go through every board and committee that Scott's been on for an awful long time, but let me tell you, he's done an exemplary job and should be well commended. I really appreciate your work. And Joyce, I'll tell you what, you've done such a tremendous job. When you look at the AAA bond rating, and it's kind of an unsung hero type of job, you know what I mean? It's a lot of people don't understand the impact you've had on the city with the bond rating and the great job you've done with balancing the books. It's really above and beyond it. And I just want to thank you and Scott for your great service. Forgot about it.
Counsel, anything else on this topic? If not, I'd like to make a couple of comments, if you would permit me to do so. And I'm going to start out thanking Joyce as well. Joyce, phenomenal. As Michael said, he still has time to work on yet, so. But that's how much you're appreciated. And I think you're a reflection of all of our outstanding employees, incredible employees that represent us, that make us who we are. That really do all the hard work. We do the heavy lifting here. I remember back in the beginning, when I came into public service, we were focused on 86th Street Corridor. And now, 18 years later, we're making even more investments there with the District One planning and visioning. It's just incredible. Now, we've just recently cut the ribbon on the Public Safety Center. All of us worked hard on that for many, many years. It was really a powerful moment when Mary Ann Kennedy from the chamber was presenting us with, you know, with the plaque. And we've all seen so many plaques presented to so many others over the years. And it was just a powerful moment, knowing that she was presenting it to us. And it was really, really something and just a, just a great time. I hope to be, to have some level of involvement in the future. I hope to contribute somehow over time. You all know what my interests are. We have our Clive Community Foundation, which I started in 2013, blessed by that. It continues to do better and better. I happen to have an interest in water transportation and infrastructure, those exciting things. And it is exciting. It's so great that we have Director Foley and in this great group here tonight to talk to us next. I'm excited to hear from that. But I would say to each of you and all of those that have joined us, my mother's here, Terry Johnson is here, my wife Julie is here, the ladies of my life, good friend Steve, longtime friend Steve Brody, former councilman is here. I'm just humbled by that. And so it's been my highest honor and my greatest privilege to serve alongside of each and every one of you. And thank you for the gift of that privilege. So I wish all of you Merry Christmas with your families. Just excited to see the success that comes your way. We've been successful here because we've chosen to be successful collectively. And we do that by communicating with each other, strategically planning every year and sticking to it. I'm just so proud of this group. Thank you again. Okay. Great recognition. Appreciated, appreciated by all of us here. So we'll close on that, and we're going to move on to something that's, that's very, very exciting. We have, find a group of representatives from representing the Des Moines Airport, Director Kevin Foley, NCMIC CEO Mike McCoy is here, and Tiffany Tauschek with the Greater Des Moines Partnership are here to talk to us about really just a game-changing project. We've all known about it for years, and good things take time, as we all know, and now it's really starting to take off. So going to have you come forward in whatever order you'd like, Director Foley. Go ahead and start, but great to have you with us. And excited to hear what you have to say tonight.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you tonight and for your time. I appreciate it very, very much. I've got some slides. I'm going to go through them quickly because I think you know a lot of this information already. And am I using the arrows and it's?
Click to, just click to the right. It has a little bit of a lag right now.
Okay.
There we go.
There we go.
Yep. And so it'll go there first and then it'll pop up.
Des Moines Airport is the state's largest airport. We have 65% of all of the passenger traffic in the state, 50% of the cargo. We are an airport authority, so we are independent from the City of Des Moines today, although the City of Des Moines appoints the board members. The bear vets them and then it brings it back to council for approval. But we are not on the tax rolls, on the property tax rolls. We receive no property tax support. We do receive funding from the federal government through a trust fund that's funded with excise taxes from aviation. But that's the majority of the support that we receive. 57% of passengers, of our local passengers come from within 90 miles of the airport. So when we say we are Iowa's airport, if you draw a radius around Des Moines, you take, you take the majority of the state of Iowa. But what's interesting is that about 43% of our passengers are coming from out of state or out of country, coming into the area to do business in the area or for leisure purposes in the area. So they're coming in and then flying back out. The, back in 2018, we completed a market analysis, and it's extensive analysis. But what's interesting are the zip codes that use Des Moines, the largest zip codes that use Des Moines. The top users are listed there on the left, and you can see on the list there that Clive is number six. So your citizens from Clive, 26,000 of them are using the airport on an annual basis. We have had a fair amount of success since we've been an airport authority. We've grown passenger traffic between 35 to 45%. We've increased our nonstop destinations from 19, when the authority was established, to 30 today. We are running out of space for aircraft parking, though, because of that success. And that's part of the reason that we're here tonight to talk to you, is that we are, we simply have a demand capacity issue within our terminal. Where we are today, our vision, if you've come to the airport within the last several months, you've been on the new entrance road, and that's depicted on this diagram in red. That was phase one. There are six phases to that road. The pink area on this diagram are phase two and three. That will launch this spring as soon as construction allows. You see that loop. That'll be the loop that will take you into the parking garage when it's completed. The orange is the extension to the parking garage. It is under design today. It will launch in 2023 construction. The rest of that pink road will then take you in front of the terminal, which is depicted there in green when we're all done. The yellow are the other phases of that, of that road. That is where we are today and the plan for completion. These are just some renderings that, artist renderings of what the entrance will look like. Again, you've seen this, that art is going in today. I don't think they quite got finished today installing it. I think it'll be done tomorrow. But it's, it's the final phase of that landscaping in that area. That art is a donation. It's on loan from the Greater Des Moines Art Foundation, so they funded that. This is just further on in on the entrance road proceeding toward the new terminal in the far, in the far distance there. On this next slide shows if you're pulling off to the right, that will take you to that loop that will take you into the new terminal. If you stay to the left, it will take you to the front of the terminal. And then this is, the white cars traveling south on floor, and what they will see from floor with, again, that loop coming back underneath and going into the new parking structure. There is no design done on the terminal yet. We did programming, which is nothing more than space. What are the, what are the space requirements? How many square feet do we need for all the different systems that are going to go in? But this is an artist rendering of what, of what the terminal could look like, expecting it will be mostly glass and steel when it's constructed. Trousel floors down in the lower right corner, that's again traveling south on floor. And a depiction, depiction of what people will see, and they will see the aircraft coming from downtown Des Moines. They will be much closer to the, to the street when this is completed. So how are we going to pay for all this? We have two charts here. On the left are the total costs, the enabling projects, the $85 million. Those projects, for the most part, are done, that they have been funded by the airport. Those were our dollars that we spent. The $29 million for phase two through six of the entrance road, the parking garage at $63 million, leaving $398 million for the terminal and demolition of the existing terminal. On the right, how are we going to pay for it? There's $18 million of private investment that has been made or is being made. Signature is under construction right now. UPS and Signature combined anticipated it'll be a total of $18 million when they're done. Our own dollars total, when we get done on this total project, would be $223 million coming from the airport, whether that's our own revenues or bonding. We're asking regional municipalities and counties for a total of $34 million. That is an ask. What that allows us to do is leverage $300 million, hopefully from the feds and from the state of Iowa. We had a number of meetings with, with city, with city managers and are proceeding with counties on those meetings. And we are now back in front of the city councils, asking for their assistance and their support to raise that $34 million. Again, that total is $575 million for the, for the, for the complete project. That figure has gone up due to inflationary reasons. We know last year alone, construction costs went up 13%. They've gone up every year since this plan was launched, so. This is kind of the stack and how we came up with it. Des Moines was the first city that we approached after we visited with the state, and they committed $10 million. And we simply went by population thereafter. Des Moines at $10 million is approximately $50 per capita. Since it is Des Moines Airport Authority stepped back and said, well, can we ask for $30 per capita from, from the suburbs for, for the first tier? And then as we got into the smaller tier of communities, went down to $10 per capita. What is, what is most important here? The money is important, but what is most important is the name on the list. We need to show both the state and the, and the federal representatives that we have community support on this. That's what they have both asked for. And, and that's the purpose of being in front of you tonight. Project timeline, we can speed the timeline up right now. Our timeline for beneficial occupancy is 2028. However, if we can close this funding, we would start design with terminal in 2022. We're bringing the team on as we speak. The new parking garage again will start in 2023. Terminal construction then beginning in 2024, two years for construction with completion in 2026. That would be two years earlier than what our timeline is currently. So our request is to, and what we're asking for is for you to help us secure funding commitments or a commitment from you to help leverage funds from both the state and our federal representatives. And then finally to construct the terminal if we can close that. The request would come through a resolution, and what I would ask in the resolution, if you agree to pass that, would be that you will commit money, those dollars, if we close the funding gap. If we can't close the rest of the funding gap, the 34 million that we're asking for from the communities and the counties won't do us any good. And I would just assume not make refunds. I just really don't even want the money unless we close the funding gap. So that's what I would ask for in your resolution. And it's not clicking again.
That's the last slide.
Is it the last slide in this one? So before I take any questions that you may have, I'd like to introduce two people who clearly don't need any introduction to any of you. You know them all, but I have Tiffany Tauschak and Mike McCoy with us, who would like to make a few comments.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for having us tonight. Thanks for your service also. So I'm here tonight wearing two different hats. First, I'm the chief community, or chief operations officer now at the Greater Des Moines Partnership, and that's the Regional Economic Development Authority. Of course, we work very closely with you on many projects throughout the 10-county region that we represent, including, of course, Clive. And the second hat I'm wearing is I'm a Clive resident. So here tonight to just reinforce the message that Kevin has shared with you that this project is extremely important from a partnership perspective. It's been a priority for several years. And this is a huge opportunity for us to have this funding and get this project done. As a Clive resident would say, while this is, the airport's obviously not within the Clive boundaries, Clive City boundaries. It is an airport and an amenity that many of our residents, including me and my family, use on an ongoing basis. So hope that you'll strongly consider supporting this important project to move our region forward together. Mike McCoy.
Tiffany, can I ask you a quick question?
Certainly.
As on the part of your hat with the Des Moines Partnership, I do appreciate, I appreciate this project. I understand it. I get it. I support it. You brought up the point of Signature and UPS coming in with 18.3, I think it was, somewhere in there, $18.3 million as corporate sponsors. Is Des Moines Partnership going to actively go after other corporate partnership or sponsors? I see that as their role here of really going out, finding that funding, funding from corporations as well that benefit from this and bring in those extra dollars. And I think the partnership should take a lead on.
Well, thanks. Thanks, Mike. Good to see you. So certainly corporate support has been very strong for this project. And as far as the funding model, that's something that we look to the airport to help provide that, that modeling. But they know, and we have reinforced many times, that partnership investors and members believe in this project and have been very outspoken in making sure that we all understand what an economic driver that the airport is. So we have primarily been leaning on corporate to help us with spreading the word that this project is very important because so many, so many of the corporates are utilizing it, as well as many of the residents as well.
And that's where I push is, that's great. And I know I'm probably stepping on you, Director Foley here, but that's great that they're spreading the word. But let's see some commitment from them. Let's see them actually buy in on this with cash, as well as the residents buying in on cash, right? Let's have these corporations say, we will step up and put a million into this, or 2 million into this, or 5 million into this. And so I'd still think that is kind of the role of the partnership of stepping forward with the airport authority, of course, leading that model. But I don't think the authority is going to say no to an extra 15 or 20 million that you raised from these corporations that are eager to see this happen. If they're so eager, let's put some dollars to that. I'm eager, and I'm willing to vote yes on the resolution. But I think some of these corporations that are here locally should be just as eager.
Thanks. Really, really appreciate that, and we'll be sure to share that with the team as well. But also just know, having Clive's commitment, as Kevin stated, noted on this, as the, one of the regional partners is going to send a really strong message to state and federal to help us with leveraging those dollars.
It's so important. Pawt and Pioneer and Principal and Wells Fargo and all those others will send a big message as well. I'll leave it at that, but.
Thank you.
I would imagine more to come there.
Thank you.
Tiffany, so thank you very much for the work you're doing.
You bet. Thanks. Mike McCoy, the CEO of NCMIC, will come up next.
Mike, good evening. Nice to have you with us.
Thank you, Mayor, and again, congratulations and thank you for everything that you've done. As Tiffany mentioned, my name is Mike McCoy. I am not a Clive City Council member, nor am I the best amateur golfer in the state of Iowa. Two questions I get very frequently, as I'm sure you do, too.
And let's stick with this. If we can bond together here and just say, we don't know for the best golfer. We haven't played it.
My goal is to be the second best Mike McCoy, second best Mike McCoy golfer in Iowa.
I've played with him. That's a very low bar.
It's my honor to serve as a CEO of NCMIC. And as you probably know, our national headquarters and our 220 employees are headquartered right here in Clive. And an interesting element of our, one of the elements of our business is ensuring a number of health science colleges and universities around the country. Anytime there is a new one of those university presidents or CFOs within their first year, they're on an airplane and they're coming here to meet us and to do a bit of due diligence. These folks travel from cities like LA, New York, Dallas, Portland, West Palm, et cetera. And one thing they all have in common, they've never been to Iowa. And the airport is their first and their last impression of our community and our company as well. NCMIC has a team of people that travel in and out of the airport every week. Airfare is a significant expense for our company. And we need more flight options to keep fares down and expand destination, expand destinations, but our gates are full. They're at capacity. I've also had the opportunity to do a behind-the-scenes tour with Director Foley.
And it's clear to me that the useful life of the infrastructure expired more than 20 years ago. And I am amazed at the job that the people at the airport do simply to keep the lights on. A vibrant airport is critical to our business needs here in Clive. The airport is an economic engine for Clive and for surrounding communities. And our region should be increasing the horsepower from the engine to ensure that our metropolitan area continues to outpace competing metropolitan areas in the Midwest. Funding the new terminal gets this done. Thank you.
Mike, thank you for your, your comments and your leadership as well. Directors, I shared with you, I, I left on Sunday and it was busy. Came back this afternoon and it was really busy in the airport. You know, I, I had the pleasure of, of being a very, very small part of the 2007 master plan that came together through our work on the MPO. And so everything was there. Now we're looking at really taking it to the next level. And, and this is so needed, I think, I think the telling thing is the number six user in the metro are the residents and businesses of Clive. Pretty powerful stuff. And I'm glad you shared that. Counselor, other questions for Director Foley? Otherwise, I want to have Matt visit a little bit about the funding aspect of this and what it looks like. Ted?
I do have a quick question. Director Foley, could you go back to that slide where it breaks down each community?
On your seat or dollars?
The one you just had.
This one?
Yeah.
There you go.
So on, on the per capita, there's a number of communities there that are at $10 as opposed to $30. And I recognize some of them are, are a bit rural, but how did you come, come up with that breakdown? For example, a community like Windsor Heights is certainly not rural. How, how, what's the justification for those differences?
We simply used 10,000 population. Looking at who was using the airport as well, smaller the population of the community, the fewer residents of that community are going to use the airport. And through discussions with the city manager committees, felt that 10,000 population was a good cutoff, but there is no magic number there. It's just, we use 10,000 at that cutoff.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Kevin, when you get the expansion here, obviously it's going to give a much greater capacity for, for the airport right there. Where do you see the expansion with maybe potentially more airlines or flights? Where do you see that? Just high level stuff?
Well, this, I'll start with situation we're in right now. And I will tell you that we cork airlines on a regular basis. And, and we have been in a couple airlines offices in late 19 and 20 that would be here today if, if had it not been for the pandemic. And I'll share with you, I mean, Sun Country and Alaska Air are the ones we were in their offices. They both made fairly a strong commitment to, to us, verbal, but, but still a fairly strong commitment. Fast forward though, and we were also successful and they have launched with the Allegiant Crew Base that's here in Des Moines now. They now have three aircraft on our gates throughout the day and overnight that we didn't have back in 19 and 2000. So we are literally out of space to park airplanes during our peak periods on, on the gate, which means that we're going to have to remotely park an airplane. They're going to have to go get it, pull it up, they'll launch a flight and then go get that aircraft and pull it up. That's not hugely uncommon in, in this industry. They just have never had to do it here in Des Moines. The bigger issue there is we only have five of those remote parking spots. The way the terminal and everything's laid out right now, we only have room for five of those. And then you have to decide if an Alaska Air or if a Sun Country is going to come in, we want them, they need to be on a gate. They only have one airplane here or possibly two. Who do we push off? Do you push an American off? Do you push a Delta off? Do you push United off? And they're our biggest carriers. So we would make that decision and we would deal with it. But that's not going to go down well. But those are the airlines and, and we have the largest airlines in Des Moines. Now we're fairly well served with six that we have, but we're always after additional flights or additional city pairs for nonstop flights, even with the existing airplanes that we have today. So, or airlines that we have today. Thank you.
Matt, you want to talk about the funding a little bit?
Sorry. I don't think we can emphasize enough what an economic driver this is. And Tiffany and Mr. McCoy have done a great job of underscoring that. But I am aware that one of the financing options the airport has considered, and I've kind of hoped it could be avoided, is to look at doing a public private partnership. And my expectation is if we can get sufficient investment from the local communities, the state and federal governments, that can be avoided. But can you talk just a little bit about some of the financing options you've considered?
Sure. We have looked at three P pretty extensively. There are pilot programs within the FAA that the entire airport could be leased to a private company. And those dollars could then be turned into dollars put into a terminal. You could build the terminal with those dollars. The issue there though, is that the governing body then surrenders control. It is a lease, you have a private entity managing the airport. I would, I personally, and this is Kevin Foley's personal opinion, I would hesitate strongly to outsource the control of the airfield, the airside to a private company. Mostly because that's a safety issue that is a function of government. Government does what, what private industry can't. On the land side, okay, you could do that, but, but they are there strictly for profit. They are not there for convenience of, of the passengers. It would strictly be a profit type issue. The other thing with, with, with the three Ps, we were looking at them as a finance source. There, there, you have longer amortization. If, if they lend the money. But if you're looking at a three piece strictly for financing, you're looking at them for, for the wrong reason. You, you need to, to literally have them build what, what it is that you're talking about. Having them manage at a later, at a later date. To Councilman McCoy's point, we have talked about private investment. I don't know what it's worth, what's it worth to have the terminal, not the airport, but the terminal named after a company? Or what is it worth? We, we generate a fair amount of dollars inside the terminal with advertising. What is it worth to have nothing but your company in the terminal? To have over 3 million passengers right now going to 4 million, I'm sure. Nothing, see nothing in that terminal but your advertising. And I don't know what it's worth. I do know that it's not worth large dollars. In other words, Iowa State, for example, I, I think Mid-American pays a million dollars a year to have their name on the field. And if you think about the television exposure they get off that. So it's not huge dollars, but we have talked about all of those types of fundings. I still believe, and it's not going to happen anytime soon. I still believe a passenger facility charge increases is the way that this should be funded. I think that's what solves the industry. The infrastructure bill that was passed from, from the federal governments is nothing more than a down payment on the infrastructure that is needed. It literally is 20 to maybe 25% of, of the dollars that are needed in the United States through the aviation industry. The passenger facility charge, a $4 increase on that, it's at 450 right now, taking it to 850. Solves a lot of problems and would be the way to fund this, but it's not going to get through Congress, at least not anytime soon.
Okay, thank you.
Last to consider, remember when a million deployments a year was a big deal?
Yeah, we just broke 2 million in 2012. Fast forward and we were just short of 3 million in 2018, so.
Great progress. Matt, you want to talk about dollars a little bit?
No, she, yeah, sure, Your Honor. So as you see on the schedule here on the screen, the airport has flexibility in how these resources can be brought to bear from the communities and the counties. And to the point where even can have a four-year payment cycle. Of course, the number you see for Clive is a little over half a million dollars. 129,000 a year, if you were to pay it over those four years. Definitely manageable within the city's, city's budget. Definitely has to compete with other resources, of course. The council could also consider, you know, we've done this before when we've had a decent fiscal year. If there's some excess reserves, you know, this is a one-time expenditure that the council could decide to utilize a portion of those excess reserves after a good fiscal year to pay ahead and not have it as a number, as a, as a line item in, in a future budget. So we could, depending on the, the airport's success with the state and federal leveraged partners. If that commitment is there and the council decides we want to even pay it off early, we, we could definitely do that. So there's a lot of options that the city could consider. There's a few things, so that's kind of on the general fund side, kind of your most flexible bucket, I guess, what I would say of dollars that the city has. Local option sales tax is also a possibility as well as the council put broad language in terms of the capital improvements that could be funded with those dollars. But those are probably be the two most likely pots. The debt service would be probably the only limitation. Because that, this isn't a piece, this isn't an infrastructure investment within our city boundaries. So we'd have some limitations there. But those, there is definitely some options for, for the city. And if we, with having the kind of flexible payment schedule, we could kind of massage that throughout the years as needed, depending on where the revenues are at for the city. So from a staff perspective, if this is something the council is very interested in, and I, and I would agree with Councilmember Judkins's comments. This is one of the most important economic development tools in central Iowa. That definitely investment is, is somebody who's used the airport and, and has a spouse who travels for business quite a bit through the airport. You can definitely see the need there and some of the pain points. And so I think there's definitely a need for some investment here, but we would be able to come up with some options for the council to consider to make this happen, if that's what you want to see.
Matt, can you talk about the timeline of some next steps then to a resolution and what's needed to get there?
Right. I don't know if you want to jump to your last, jump to that last slide again, Kevin? That has the action step. So really at this point, all the airport is asking for is securing a commitment. Not saying we need the dollars today, they want a commitment from the communities and the counties. They've shared with us a draft resolution of agreement to do that. It would be a, a council voting on a resolution. And then we can determine how we hit that 517 number. As long as we get it to them by 2026, basically is, is, is how, of course, we would outline for them how that funding would happen. That's really the only action step that's needed. And if I understand, Kevin, that really over the next month or two is what the airport is hoping for, for these commitments. I understand you've got three in the queue on December 20th for some of the larger communities that it sound West Des Moines, Ankeny, Urbandale even, potentially.
In Des Moines.
In Des Moines. So what's really nice to see is I think you're, you're seeing the big communities that are, that are really taking the lead. And, and I've already heard, you know, there's from these, some of my colleagues that they, there's a huge understanding across the metro for the need here. And I, it's great to see the, the large communities in Polk County as well, taking a big leadership role on this. And so what I would propose is if the council's agreeable to it at one of your January meetings, we would bring that resolution back for your, for your vote and approval. And then we would look to plan that in future budgets. Maybe have kind of a baseline plan of the per year commitment that you see. And then there's a decision point that could be made by the council of, again, if you have a, a year where we have some excess reserves, maybe you pay it ahead if you want to, just to get it off the books. A lot of things that we can do there.
Okay, that's good direction, Matt. Council questions?
What happens if, if you're not able to secure those state and federal grants? Is, what's the backup plan? Or it just goes away?
Well, it, it can't go away. One of the things that, that no one has ever heard me say, I've had people say, Kevin, you're very confident that this is going to happen. And I am confident it's going to happen. The question is when? If, if we don't receive funding through, through a government, the governmental entities and we have to wait until we can do it ourselves, it literally will be 20 years. But 20 years from now, I think the airport can save enough money to just fund it themselves. But it will be 20 years and what is, what has the airport done to the economy in that 20 years is the question. Here's an opportunity to leverage 34 million in our ass from municipalities and, and, and the counties into hopefully a $300 million commitment. And we have strong interest from the state of Iowa that they want this done, from the governor specifically herself. She wants this done. Whether or not the money is, is as fungible as, as originally thought. In other words, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, the final ruling on that is not out. Hopefully it remains very flexible and, and somewhat loose. But it may not, I mean, Treasury's still working on that. But what we would do is take these commitments to the state and say, okay, we, we have done what you asked. Here's, here's the resolutions of the commitment. We did what you asked. Now help us out.
Eric?
No, I just, I, I, I like to, just a quick comment. I like the idea of, again, incorporating some of the private industry we have here. And I really liked the idea of the Metro Waste Authority International Airport right there.
We would love to if the airport authority would give us a few million as well and we would reciprocate.
I'll leave it at that.
Going to a whole new level. That's, that's wonderful. Mike, did you have something or anybody else?
I just comment, I had the privilege to attend the partnership legislative breakfast yesterday. And it was good to hear bipartisan support from those on the panel for this project. So I thought that was good in augmenting the governor's interest in providing funding.
I, I do fully support this and I, I do see the need and, and, you know, when, it's a simple, really, if you make it as basic as when you get off a plane, like you said, these presidents from universities, that first impression does mean something, right? And wherever we fly, whether, you know, you're flying to Bend, Oregon, and the first impression is, you know, in some cases nicer than sometimes in the Des Moines airport, right? At times over the last 10 years. So I do believe in having that done. I am a strong, strong, and I'll go back to this. I don't understand the corporate sponsorship because Clive is not asking for a wing inside the airport, nor is Altoona or Des Moines or anyone else. These corporate sponsorships need to step up and make a donation to the foundation or to whoever to then flow that money over to the airport. That economic driver is just as big for them as it is for these cities, right? And to get more employees and to get those employees they want and the qualified folks they want. These airports have to exist. And so it has to be a partnership between the residents of the city that some don't have skin in the game, right? And the corporations, the very large corporations, it's the same argument if you've ever been at a DART meeting with me. You know, we're looking for funding. Where are these corporations stepping up and giving the money just to give it instead of saying, we want full access or we want this or we want, you know, the bus named after us or anything like that. Clive's not asking for it. Altoona's not asking for it. I, I push again that these companies need to come up with, we need to see 10, 20, 30 million from them as well. I'm not saying reduce ours, I'm good with the dollar amount. But now you have another 20 or 30. And that shows us that they have skin in the game too. So I'll leave it at that.
I don't, and I don't, I don't think there's any disagreement on any of that.
I haven't heard the chase yet, right? Just that they support and they sign off on the support. We'll sign off and support with no money. That's easy. You know?
And it may, it may be required depending on how much of that 3 million or 300 million rather actually comes to fruition as well. So I, we're not telling you anything you don't know.
I assure you, it's been discussed.
Kevin, you've been a, a, just a true leader and a patriot as it relates to this. I mean, you've been, you've been working on this since you came to us. And you, you know, you, you, you carry that torch very, very well and continue to do it. Thank you for doing that. Team Mike, Tiffany, great to have you on board with this. And, and I, I think this council is supportive. And I think this council is supportive in general. I think that there's, you know, things that we'll see come to fruition.
Thank you again for your time.
Yeah, yeah, great. Thank you. Okay, Matt, thanks. And we'll look forward to next steps and further discussion.
That resolution.
Next item is consent items. Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote?
Kevin?
That passes five to zero. So we have a presentation and an introduction in chief row.
You kind of have an introduction. Paramedic Hill is on an overdose call right now. He's on his second shift with Clive. So he's not here, but I still want to virtually just kind of recognize him and give the highlights to the council. He comes to us as a paramedic with experience from Mayo Clinic and the University of Iowa. He's got a biology degree from Buena Vista and a biomedical science master's degree from Iowa State. So the one interesting thing about Jonathan is he's the first full-timer that we've hired that is a paramedic, but without fire experience. So we'll be putting him through fire training in the first half of 2022. But he's excited about that. And we're excited about the level of paramedic expertise that he brings to us. So we'll try to get him here for the January meeting so that you can put a name with a face. You recognize his voice because he does some part-time stuff as a sports announcer on radio. So he's got a radio voice.
Pretty great background. Glad to have him on the team.
Have a face for radio.
Thanks, chief.
He's got a face for radio now.
Very good. Okay, we're going to move to action items now. We have several public hearings, actually. And the first one is regarding the 2022-2026 Capital Improvement Plan. And Matthew, did we post appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor. Actually, all three of tonight's public hearings were published November fifty-second in the Des Moines Register.
Very good. Thank you, Matthew. Doug?
Good evening. As you mentioned before, you tonight is consideration of the 2022-2026 Capital Improvement Plan for the city. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail with this particular discussion because it is very similar, principally the same as what we worked through about a month ago at our workshop. So the plan itself, again, is what allows us to directly link the capital investments that the community is making to your strategic planning elements. I think you'll find as you went through that plan, we are hitting on those very key elements related to street infrastructure, whether or not that is additional capacity and the rehabilitation of our streets. Certainly significant investments within our park and recreation spaces. And also significant investment, as we discussed quite a bit, related to resilient infrastructure. And particularly with our further investment into the flood buyout space along University Boulevard, trying to reduce those flood risk for that neighborhood. I think you'll also find, as we went through the CIP, that the investments are broadly distributed across the community. We are still very much managing and working towards high-quality residential neighborhoods in our western portion of the community. We need to continue to make investments to ensure that that happens. We also are investing within the existing portions of the community, ensuring that those areas continue to be strong and diverse neighborhoods. And finally, all of what has been presented to you does come with a very large price tag. You know, as we discussed, we're presenting a very significant capital improvement plan for the next five years. That being said, you were able to work through the prioritization. Staff has put a lot of effort into making sure that we really did two things with the finances. One, maintain that constant or steady debt service levy. It's not being proposed to increase, although we are having these very substantial investments. And also, we are ensuring that you have adequate and appropriate flexibility to deal with both the short-term as well as midterm projects and efforts that you might want to undertake. And even trying to anticipate some of those little further-out efforts that we think the city might need to be dealing with. So making sure that we have adequate financial flexibility to manage those changing conditions. Overall, I think we have a very responsive capital improvement plan for you. Again, I'd be happy to go through any of the specific projects if you have questions or address any other broader questions that you might have on the process itself.
Thank you, Doug. Council questions? Comments for Doug? We've vetted this pretty thoroughly.
We've closed the public hearing.
Second. Moved by Ted, seconded by Eric. Close the public hearing. Before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item? Either here or online, Pete?
No hands are going up, Carter.
Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero to close the public hearing.
Move a resolution approving the 2022 CIP.
Moved by Ted, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote?
My iPad's really slow. Connection is slow.
That passes five to zero. Thanks, Doug. Okay, very good. We'll move to our second public hearing now regarding the FY22 Budget Amendment Number One. Joyce?
Yes, and thank you again for that wonderful recognition. That was very, very, I'm very honored to serve you guys. And it's been great working with everyone the last seventeen years. So.
I'll have another one next year for you.
Really quick to add, Joyce's last day will be January sixth. And I think I've been sharing this, the afternoon of January fifth, we'll have a reception here in the community room. But I'll share that information. But we still got a little bit of time with her.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be around for a few weeks still. So as you're aware, our typical budget amendment routine is to do it in the spring. But as we have done in the past, when we do the flood-prone property buyout program, we will do that amendment in the middle of the year. So that is the biggest part of this amendment is that. As well as when we did the borrowing for 2021C, that is all paid with TIF revenue. So there is no impact to the debt service levy on that. And so that is all paid with TIF revenues. So we will be amending the budget to make that first payment in June first for that bond issue. And then next year, when we certify the TIF debt, we will pick up that amount plus what is due for the upcoming year. And then every year after that, it will be certified from the TIF revenues. And then the other, the other items that I had mentioned were just not included in the state form. But when we went through the budget process last year and the cash flows that you were shown incorporated these numbers, they just didn't get transitioned to our state form that we turned in. So there wasn't anything left out of the funding pieces that you saw. So it's just incorporating those at this time. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Questions, council? For Joyce?
Move to close public hearing.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Ted. To close the public hearing, before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item, either here or online, Pete?
No hands are going up, Carter.
Seeing none, will the council please vote? That's five to zero to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution approving the FY22 Budget Amendment Number One.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Joyce. All right, our third public hearing now regarding the proposed ordinance number 1109, changing the boundaries of the election precincts, rather. Matthew?
There's not a lot to talk about. After every federal census, we are required to look at our voting precincts and make sure that they are in line with the laws that are on the books. So after the census numbers came out slowly, after they came out and the congressional redistricting took place, we evaluated our districts. We had to split what used to be six, we had to split into three separate precincts because of the population growth. We've drafted up the ordinance amendment and we're ready for you to consider it. I'll answer any questions you have about it. And the next action after that would be consideration of a resolution to approve a resolution or an agreement with the city of Waukees for them to include this little island in one of their voting precincts because by law, that is orphaned. It's not contiguous to the city of Clive within Dallas County. Dallas County does not look at any of that. They only consider what's over in their counties. So because of that law, we have to include that in with Waukees.
This is first consideration for full readings.
And staff would recommend and ask that you please actually do waive the rule requiring the three readings because we have a hard deadline of January fifteenth. These have to be done at that point in time. And the counties have to have at least ten days to review them. And then they do their re-presincting. So we're under the gun.
Ted? So do we have to have, like, voting locations for each district?
Every precinct does have a voting location, yes. And there's some rules in place that say every precinct has to be under thirty-five hundred in population or voting population. But we don't want to divide them up so small that they have to fund a polling place in each of those locations when it's a small group.
Well, that's where I was going to go with that. Is District, what is it, eight? Only has, at least at this time, like, three hundred people.
According to the census, but Amanda's not here. Doug might be able to back her up on this, but there's actually about a thousand people there now.
Okay.
And just so you know, too, a lot of times the county will look to combine precincts together at a voting location. So like the Presbyterian Church, Heartland Presbyterian, actually covers two precincts today. And so a lot of times, though, and like City Hall, for example, actually represents multiple, or has in the past represented multiple precincts. So they, when they don't have a lot of locations to go to out there, they can combine it into one location. And then the county auditors are the ones that kind of do that, navigating and determining those locations.
Okay.
And to piggyback on that, it's also estimated that what is District Eight right here, or Precinct Eight, that will probably actually need to be split again.
Yeah, and that's going to grow for sure.
Yeah, that was kind of what we were trying to get it in a way that we wouldn't have to do it again. But to kind of have some sensical lines here with the streets and things like that, we just, eight's going to end up maybe being broken up. But it won't be until 2030 that that will occur, if it does occur.
Right.
Susan, you have a question?
This is really just a curiosity, but with the orphaned area, are those residents able to vote for Clive elections? They just vote in that location?
Yep. Yeah, it's a strange loophole that's in the law, but that is how it's written. And this is how the state has directed us to deal with it.
Who called the Saks of Houses?
Yeah, it's about twenty houses, I think. Yep.
And one business, there's no commercial property there, but yeah.
I'd move that the rule requiring that.
Close the public. Let me get back to the voting software.
Moved by Michael, seconded by John to close the public.
I never got one of these right, rookie.
Is there anybody here to speak on this item or online?
I've not seen anybody.
Seeing none, will the council please vote?
I attempted to move it. John, seconded.
And that passes five to zero to close the public hearing.
Now, I'd like to move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to this meeting be suspended with respect to ordinance number 1109.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by John to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That's five to zero.
Move that ordinance number 1109 be considered, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Moved by Michael, seconded by John. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero. Let the record reflect that ordinance number 1109 is declared to have been enacted.
Move the resolution approving memorandum of agreement regarding a combined precinct for Clive, a city of five, and Waukees.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Matthew. Okay, item number four is, excuse me, Proposed Ordinance Number 110110, amending provisions pertaining to cash control procedures, Joyce.
Yes. So this ordinance amendment is just particularly to, it addresses in that ordinance the change funds in every department that we have. So the library is in need of raising their change fund from one hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty. Recently, they've been experiencing a lot of cash transactions, and then they're forced to make change runs. So that was what started it. And now we have transitioned the goat merchandise up to that area in the library because they have a lot more foot traffic, a little more public presence up there. So that also adds for the need to do it. So.
And those little critters rolling in the cash.
Yeah, and it's the holiday season. So they're probably going to have a spend on that merchandise. So anyway, this would be great. And if you, I would like to request to rave the rules if you would mind doing that tonight so we can get it adopted and get them set.
I move that the ordinance requiring Joyce to stay one more year be. That's next. No, sorry. Move that the ordinance number one, are we suspending? Yes, sir. Move that the rule requiring that the ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to this, to this meeting be suspended with respect to ordinance number 1110.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan to suspend the rules. Any discussion, council? Seeing none, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero to suspend the rules.
Move the ordinance number 1110 be considered, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Susan. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes five to zero. Let the record reflect that ordinance number 1110 is declared to have been enacted. Thank you, Joyce. Okay, we'll move to action item number five now, resolution setting public hearing for January twenty-seventh. twenty twenty-two, six P M, Harbaugh Boulevard Phase One Reconstruction Project. And Jim?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Resolution for your consideration tonight is the setting of the public hearing and award for Phase One improvements on Harbaugh Boulevard. The aerial imaging included in your packet and shown here shows the project area for twenty twenty-two between Northwest eighty-second Street and Northwest seventy-eighth Street. As a reminder, this will be undertaken in twenty twenty-two. And as a reminder, the second phase of the project will extend from eighty-second Street and head west to eighty-sixth Street. And that's currently scheduled for twenty twenty-three construction. Normally, an item like this would be on consent agenda, but we are seeking some additional design input from you folks tonight on a couple items include, to include in the plans. Staff has had two neighborhood meetings with neighbors in the area. They were held in late October. And then again, just last week, several staff members were in attendance to present information on the project. And also council members Edwards and McCoy were in attendance at both meetings, which, which was appreciated. In addition to the information included in the packet tonight, my understanding is there was a, an email sent out to you summarizing some of the information specifically related to last week's meeting and the topics discussed there. The main item we're seeking some design input on is related to the proposed trail or sidewalk on the north side of Harbaugh. The original project scope, the plans as they exist today include an eight-foot trail section being constructed there. As in most reconstructions, there's, in older areas, there's existing four-foot sidewalks on both sides in that area. So again, opposing an eight-foot on the north and a five-foot on the south. And that was one of the major topics of discussion with the neighbors is what is appropriate out there? Should we stick with the eight as originally proposed or is five more appropriate? Again, several staff were in attendance and some others can chime in here on the importance. But again, it would still be staff's recommendation to stick with the eight-foot section, not just for the benefit of the folks immediately adjacent, but when you look at the larger area and the District One connectivity, feel it's important as a first step to get that eight-foot trail in there. So depending on where the discussion ends up tonight, if there's changes, staff may need, will need some additional time to make changes. So we may be back before you with a different date for setting the public hearing, but we can circle back with, with you on that at the end for a recommendation, how best to proceed. That's the end of my introductory remarks. Again, other staff were present. There may be some folks, I don't know that there's any in attendance here tonight or virtually. But again, that's kind of the main feedback we're needing tonight as far as wrapping up the plans here in the next few weeks, hopefully.
I'm particularly interested in the commentary from those that were present. Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just ask, and what's the feedback from the residents on what's their preference right there? And I'd also ask for those residents, for shoutouts out of town.
I think at the very end, there were about eighteen people in attendance. And Pete helped me, but I, we did take a straw poll.
Just a straw poll mid-conversation, ten opposed to the eight-foot north side sidewalk, five in favor, and three representatives from Glacier Properties to chose not to participate in the straw poll.
About you guys that were there, what was the general tone?
Well, my impression was that snow removal was a big factor. And I think if the city were to treat that as a trail, that the city was responsible for removing the snow, I think that would address a lot of the concerns.
But isn't our normal policy that they only have to do the same amount that any other sidewalk would be? So they still wouldn't have the extra eight foot. It would just be the five feet, right?
Correct. And this is a, and this is a situation we have all over the city. As the council will recall, we had the same discussion on Meredith on that south side. And, and we chose to keep the, the trail in there, but we reminded them, they only have to clear like they would if it was a normal sidewalk. And, and that is some of the concern that I, I have just in terms of the precedent that that would set. If we put this trail in and then the city committed, we would, we would have to look at some code changes and there's, because there's a liability component. We have other parts in the city where the eight-foot trail is in place. Hundred forty-second Street has some Meredith, Hunter Street, we have some areas that have that. So there would be a kind of a bigger scope. We would be potentially kind of setting a precedent for that obviously gives, from a staff perspective, gives me some pause, but just wanted to offer that. But to your point, yes, they're, you know, they're not required to do the whole eight-foot if they don't want to.
Has that been communicated to residents then? Or, and what was their thoughts? What was their feedback?
It was communicated. There was additional feedback on how that actually happens or what that looks like. But again, it, it happens elsewhere as, as well. That's the current policy is, is of today.
I think for a number of the folks who are, live along the north side, who have some concerns about this, there was a skepticism, too hard a word on this, but they know that snow, if you don't shovel the whole sidewalk, ends up creeping back onto the pavement. And that it's possible that people using the sidewalk might think that they weren't actually clearing it appropriately as well. So those are the types of unknowns that I think were giving them some pause.
Change is always difficult, and especially with those nodes, Pete, that, that you, you know, you addressed right there. My sense is that once if the council decides to go with that eight foot, that after a couple of seasons, it might become a moot issue as we've seen that in other areas as well.
Great. Mike, do you have impressions?
Yeah, the several things that I, I think John is right, although I don't. I don't know if I want to go as far as setting that precedent of, of having them, us clearing it. We do have some other strange arrangements on eighty-sixth Street of mowing and other things that we mow certain areas that are kind of private company, commercial properties, I think. It seems like down there towards the corner and the frontage of what come and go in that area.
The streetscaping area, we do have a couple contractual arrangements for the landscaping and the snow removal.
I just can't believe Elizabeth here and now we're dealing with sidewalks, but anyhow. I've got a button. Yeah.
Moving right along.
So, yeah, but, but I get their point and I too believe that the eight foot, I, I really do feel an eight foot should go there. Now, this council has made a decision and it's come up back on us from Clark Street to back off eight street, eight feet and make a four-foot, five-foot, whatever it was on Clark because of folks being in this room. And there were eighteen people there, more than Clark Street had here. And another meeting before that. So that's where I'm mixed. I think the eight foot, it's a good plan. I think we've, we showed them where it goes. I believe when you look at this picture here and you move north, there are a lot of houses up there that will benefit from this as well. I did give Glazier Property a bit of a lecture that maybe they need to step up and clear that sidewalk. And, you know, maybe they need to step up and start putting something back into this neighborhood. A lot of them are their kids going to schools and Clive Elementary and other places. And so I know they've answered to that. They, they've responded that we're gonna look at stuff lightly, but they haven't come up with any kind of commitment. You have five or six people that live on that street that have a problem with it. That's the sum of it, right? So to Eric's point, change is tough, but.
Well, I guess that's where I wanted to go with this is and this is just a comment. I support the eight foot. But if we as a group decide to go that way, we need to be ready to stand behind it and not switch just because we get a little bit of pressure from a few residents, right? I, I think, I think it's really important that we, we stick to our guns at that.
I want to piggyback on that. And I think this is the important point. This is a whole district we're talking about now that we're visioning for. And, and pedestrian connectivity is one of the key issues that we have with this district today. Shared it on our CAC meetings. We talked about it amongst ourselves. Appreciate the Clark Street parallel, but that's a very, very different neighborhood situation. And I think what we're looking at here is a broad vision for this district. And I think the eight foot really supports it. And you're right, we've got to stand behind what we do for sure. But I think it's the vision that I come back to. And I know it's hard.
And just to piggyback, that was my next point too, was, you know, this is a critical component of the District One plan. And the folks in Eastern Clive and, and, you know, my sense is we look at Crestview School, the interconnectivity and the access to the green belt right there. And some of the things happening that this is almost its own small economic engine from a recreational aspect, from just a, a transportation movie of kids on bikes. And to me, it's, it, it's important to rejuvenate that neighborhood. I certainly appreciate your comments on, on Clark Street. And I can see from a high level, you can see the parallels on that. But from my perspective, this is very important, that, that Eastern District, that District One plan right there.
As a, to make sure if I might, as a way to frame up that question of connectivity and connect it to the bigger work the city was doing that Councilman Clyde referenced, we did share this map and the larger document that has come from work on the eighty-sixth Street neighborhoods to show some of the ideas that were generated by the neighborhood and by our consulting team and staff about, about what connectivity could look like in the future. And right there shaded in green is the area on Harbaugh that we're discussing, plus what would be completed in twenty twenty-three over to eighty-sixth.
It has to go somewhere, right? To, to the residents that were there, this has to mean something to them. And I think staff did a great job this last meeting to really stress what happens next, right? The first meeting, I think they saw it and said, so what? You got a big giant sidewalk that goes nowhere. And so to see, see this vision, I hate the sheros in any city. So we need to figure that out better in the next 10 years or what have you to get folks down to this park. But I made the point that night to say that I don't envision this to take you down to the green belt as much as I do that it takes you to the other parks in this area. We have one down there on seventy-fifth Street, seventy-eightth. That is a hidden gem that nobody uses. If we can drive in big, it's pretty big once you get in it. If we can drive kids down there and families down there and drive people to the new Lanan Park, this is their own little oasis here above university. And that, that trail will be that first factor of driving these kids to those two parks, not having to go to, you know, long distance to another park or what have you, once we get the splash pad in. So I get it. I get the neighbors.
Mike, and everybody, this is a great discussion. And I think we're setting the public hearing tonight. So this will be a great discussion to continue to have. But I think this, this tees it up for all of us.
It is, but I think what we need and what I've heard from staff is this sets the public hearing, but they need to know tonight that we are driving towards that towards that eight foot. And as Ted said, once we're in, we're in. There's no backing up because four people show or 10 people show or.
So your honor, to that point, if, if the council's supportive of this resolution and setting this public hearing, from staff's perspective, we're taking that as with the way that staff has laid the plans out, the council's supportive of that. And that's what we're going to put out to bid and bring back in January.
Yes, sir.
With the eight-foot trail.
Just one other point that I want to make that, so we have the cop, so everybody here has confidence on how we're going to bring that bid package back. We have had very, very positive response to the stormwater partnership proposal. If we were going to go a different direction and start doing things under the right-of-way, big expensive gray infrastructure, this would be that moment where we needed to start drawing new pictures. But I think because of the strong interest we've had from all of the participants who have come to the meetings and also early interest from partners even today like Crestview Elementary, which is at the far northern edge of the eligible area in our sub watershed, we're putting together a lot of yards for potential soil quality restoration, for tree plantings and for other applications as well. So I, at this point, I've been right, credit Rachel with that, that hard work. But I think from that early interest, it makes me feel confident that we're going to hit the mark we need to, to meet our stormwater requirements.
Good. Pete, thank you for that.
One thing I wanted to add to that, and I was asking Rachel for clarification, is there's actually a portion of this trail that we are going to try that's pervious pavement. And that's one thing that I definitely want to hold up for the residents that this is going to be a new, and what block is that that we're trying in?
Between Eightieth Court and Eightieth Place. So there's no driveways there.
Yeah.
And we'd stop short of the approaches then on the corner. So we'd be able to get a block in there.
And one thing I would say to the residents in this area that a commitment that I think we could make as a city is that's going to be a new pavement type. And then there's some maintenance that goes along with that. I think we can come alongside that test area. Because if there is some things that we need to do from a clean, we're learning this ourselves with, with the public safety facility and the bigger, the parking lot pavers. I think what, what we can say to those residents is that the city is going to be here to help out and learn with them and, and help them with the maintenance of that because we're all learning on that a little bit. So I, I think there is something we can give specifically to that new kind of pavement type that we're going to have on this trail that we want to try out as part of that stormwater partnership.
Yeah, just gonna make the flip on that. Let's use the doc cam again real quick.
So we're talking about like about a dozen homes here. Are, are there more to the west or is that mostly Glacier Properties?
It, it switches a little bit as you get into more commercial properties and apartment complexes. So this would be the main piece where you're.
These are the main homeowners that are going to be affected. I mean, we're talking about an eight-foot sidewalk along the north side here. Is there any true impact to any of these driveways or, or homes that, that you can speak to, Jim, that where, where we can anticipate, you know, a specific homeowner really having a case against us here that we're, we're truly negatively impacting their property?
The short answer is no, we've looked at the driveways. I mean, again, we're trying to, obviously, you can see how those were put in. It, it gets a little wavy there sometimes in the right-of-way varies through there. So we are looking at getting that at a standard setback. So some of the drive grades change a little bit, but we looked at those and we don't think those are negatively impacting anyone.
I, I would say Terry Lowe's house.
Yeah.
That was the one I was saying too. Impacted not by drive, but by property. And I'm not saying that switches the scale, right, of why or why we shouldn't do it. But those are trees of hers or what have you. Those are bushes. Those are.
That's the one I was looking at too.
That's real close to that fence of hers in the backyard.
And I, I would agree with Councilman McCoy. Terry's been an active participant in these meetings. She has made a very strong case with her neighbors, indicating that this is going to negatively affect the ways she likes to use her property. Some of that is the result of the way that neighborhoods build over time and ordinance has changed. Would we allow somebody to encroach this closely and build those types of improvements in the right-of-way today in our neighborhoods? No. Is it the case that it's there and this is some way that she's lived in and enjoyed her home? Yes, for a long time. I'd point to some of the other experiences we've had on Clark Street as well. These are folks who think of this space in front of their home as theirs. And nobody will feel the effects of our work there more than they will as well. So I, I appreciate where Terry's been on this. And I, for all of the participants, just like what we saw on Clark Street, these are people who have come with good intentions and are showing a real interest in their neighborhood. So yes, Terry isn't the only person. She's been a vocal person on this point. She probably is the property owner that will see the most effect if we move forward with the eight-foot sidewalk.
It also gives the city, and we're only saying publicly, but it, it gives us a chance to write something that I think, you know, whatever 20, 30 years ago, we should have never allowed anyways or happened. And that is that sidewalk that goes, goes to Terry's house, goes up around a tree and around a a light pole, back down, then goes down and goes back up around some other corner farther down and back down. And let's straighten it. Once we got a shot, let's straighten that thing, make it a runway for these kids and, you know, safe. Because those, that's those jig jag things are not safe.
I'm not sure the history on that, but that is, it does jog in there. But that is not a property that we need to acquire any right-of-way from. There is still ample right-of-way to put that there. Her fence is on private property, but forever, whatever reason, I don't think it's grade-related. That sidewalk juts in there. But again, there's seven or eight feet of right-of-way behind there now.
And that will be straight when we're done.
Correct.
The light pole will be moved and.
Okay. No, good discussion. Thanks for bringing that up, Ted. So. John?
Well, I was just gonna make another comment. We did hear from 10 residents very, very strongly about this. I think it's important that we think about the messaging to them. I mean, one of the questions they had, go, what's, what's the point? If you've already got this carbon and stuff, why are you bothering having these, you know, if you're not listening to us? So I, I think it's critical that we be responsive to that and put together a messaging that talks about the new pavements, we're going to experiment.
and put together a messaging that talks about the new pavements we're going to experiment with, the city's role in that. And make sure that we know their voices have been heard. Beyond that, of course, there was a concern about the width of the street, which, and I think the big concern was as we get to the daycare and such. And Jim, I don't know if you want to address what might be a possible solution to their concerns there.
Now, the traffic study that we looked at upfront, we are doing something similar here on this residential end of it, similar to what we did on Clark Street, and that's reducing the width of the roadway from 31 feet to 26 feet. Again, what John's talking about, there was some discussion, again, as you move further west into more commercial and more apartment dense areas, it will probably be in our best interest to get that back out to the 31 feet from the west end of this project to 86th Street. So again, that's kind of what we're, we haven't obviously dove too far into that design yet, but that'd probably be our direction moving forward then based on feedback from these recent.
What's the rationale on that reduction, speed reduction or?
Yeah, a couple of things. That is, we looked at the, the traffic and I, I know you recall on Clark Street, we did that as well. And it really wasn't a traffic amount issue, it was just more how people are acting. And the traffic counts are similar here on this, on the east end of this. Again, that 1,500 to 2,000 vehicles per day. So it does act as traffic calming. It does also, the, the right of way here obviously is a lot narrower than what we had on, on Clark. So we are also looking at using some of that additional space to not only, you know, relocate the public utilities, but also provide more room for private utilities as well through the corner.
Do we need speed reduction? I mean, Clark Street's on a hill, and one of the big reasons was because of the speeding. Is speeding a problem here?
We did hear feedback from the residents that they thought that speed was an issue as we, as we kind of talked through those issues with.
Yeah, because maybe the other one that was a little different than the Clark Street discussion was on the far east, or excuse me, far west side of the project area, there's a daycare and a lot of drop offs that happen. And folks were nervous about kids darting around when they're being dropped off. That was part of what led us to thinking about whether or not that 31 foot width from 82nd further west was more appropriate as we get into more of those commercial areas. That was, I want to credit the neighborhood and Councilman Edwards and Councilman McCoy on that. It's because as we kind of iterated on that together and we're talking about the pros and cons of 26 and 31, this whole idea of some sort of physical indicator that you're coming into the residential portion of Harbach as opposed to the more commercial portion, and what we can do to accomplish that with the narrower street and potentially some parking solutions, some even some other things that might signal that as we think about the future of Diamond. It all started, it really makes sense for us. We think that there's an opportunity as we go into the next phase for 2023 construction to take some of that good learning and apply it.
So I guess my point being, if we can communicate that we've heard from the residents on their concern on that, this is how we're accommodating it, these are the things that we're doing, I think it'll be important to do.
Yes, we could certainly do that. One point that we also committed to was to keep them in the process. So while I think excellent, this is exactly what staff needs tonight so that we can prepare the documents for the hearing. We did commit to telling them, here's what the council discussed, and if they ask for additional engagement, we are absolutely all, all, all open to that. Does mean that they might also want to come and talk directly to all of you, and I know you're all open to that as well. So we'll, we'll lead with that, that this is still the process, that they were heard, and that your discussion tonight reflects that they actually have had a hand in shaping what the council's planning to do and that there are still additional steps and opportunities to engage.
You know, one other thing, Mayor, that we heard that night, and I think we could show some in good faith that we listened to them, is enforcement wise, that we need to start looking at enforcing some of the parking on that street. So there are, and I've seen it many, many times, a large dump trailer, you know, sitting without being hooked up, and that frustrates them that, that's there, you know? The parking from the apartments and the glacier apartments flooding over into the street, not that we can enforce it yet, but we have to do something about it. They're saying, can't we get no parking in that area of the daycare and the glacier property? Because it's them coming out of the apartments flooding over without enough parking, parking there, and then the daycare is dropping off. This is almost like a swim with Kim thing, right? Let's keep it under control. Yes, you have a commercial property, but you also have a drive through lane. Let's keep it inside that drive through lane, let's make it no parking. Those are things they're asking for that are simple, that we can look at here in the next month and tell them we're, we're listening and start acting. Maybe putting a speed, your speed sign on that street and getting some numbers off. Is it really an issue, right? I think it is, but is it? And with the police station moving, it's not going to help. You know, that issue, maybe putting a police car up there at the old station every once in a while. But those are things that residents want to see changed, and those are easy ones we can give them.
Jeff, come on up.
Just quickly.
Get to the mic.
One, one of the things that we find is when we put the police officer's speed sign out there, people see it flashing and it changes the true signs. We have traffic counters that also do speed studies that they don't know is being done, gives us much accurate. So if we truly want that data, I would recommend we use our traffic counter for the police ones, because then we can put them out there to slow them down. Ours give a much more accurate of the actual.
What's actually happening?
It's a great plan. And then the, the, the light come later, you know, the blinking light that slows you down later. But yeah, we do need a true count, I think.
Well, this is all good discussion.
I do have a question before we wrap up.
Well, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Just waiting my turn here. On the permeable pavers, was there any reaction to that? Any concerns at all from residents about?
That actually wasn't presented at the meeting. I mean, that is something that we've been working through the design process, but that wasn't.
I just feel a little uncomfortable about testing in an area. I'd kind of like to do that on a city property or something in case there's any objection to that, just to be prepared.
Something we can look at.
Would these be similar to the ones with the permeable pavers that we have up at the new public safety facility or?
It'd be a little smaller scale than that, wouldn't it?
Rachel comes to my question.
What we're looking at right now are actually permeable concrete panels, so that it actually would be larger. So the problem that's occurred a lot in constructing permeable concrete is that the, it's not built right. It's not constructed correctly because contractors don't know how to do it. So this kind of eliminates that, but it allows us to set more, a larger piece at once. And then that hopefully will eliminate any issues that might have us uneven settling with ADA and all of that.
Yeah, on the surface, this is the first time I've heard of that. On the surface, I am probably opposed to that happening on a residential that is already a little heated to do a pilot trial than to do it at one of our parks or one of our city halls or something like that. Because I'm a resident and that's going bad and those panels are sinking and, and whatever else, I'm not happy. I'm less happy than I already am with an eight foot driveway, runway outside my house.
That's something we can definitely take a look at, because I totally see your point.
I like the thought, I'm not sure the application for this neighborhood and this project could be on track. Mike, I agree, maybe on the city property to continue.
So I think that we'll be able with the pilot program to find an offset. So I think it's a pretty clear direction from the council here that we want to nix that, and that'll also change up some more cost calculations.
Jim, with that change, setting the hearing tonight, though, for that kind of change, probably not.
No. Good.
Good, let's send a public hearing, shall we?
I'll move the resolution.
Moved by John, seconded by Susan. Further discussion, it's been good discussion already, and this is very useful. Seeing now, will the council please vote? Pass is five to zero. Thanks, Jim. And Rachel as well, and Jeff. Trifecta team there. Okay, we'll move to item number six was, which is a resolution approving the 2022 state legislative priorities.
Thank you, Your Honors. So this is an identical version of what was circulated to the council in a Friday email a couple of weeks back, outlining our state legislative priorities. We've boiled this down to a page, but there's a lot of continuity from what you've seen in past years. A lot of emphasis on different water related projects. The Iowa funding is in this document again, as well as support for the state's various other existing grant programs that we've been able to use very successfully, like REAP and the Urban Water Quality Initiative Program. A couple of new ones were more direct this year than we have been in the past about the Department of Natural Resources becoming an MS3 entity. And we've also asked for the Iowa Department of Natural Resources to provide some more regular annual funding for the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual. Do we lead, though, with the most important priority, which is the finances that the state can, financial decisions the state can make, which then have effects on the state, the city of Clive? This is the city asking for the formula for employer, employer employee contribution percentages, to be fair. We've had that as our, one of our leading priorities for multiple years now. And then next, for the state not to impose more restrictive property tract systems that would eliminate our flexibility that we really need to provide the valuable services that residents have come to expect from Clive. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Resolution. I would second the resolution, the final resolution of Mayor Sircina's term, as a matter of fact. Bittersweet.
Moved and seconded, moved by John, seconded by Eric. Discussion?
Yes, I do. All right, yesterday's partnership breakfast. The House Republican Representative said they won't be doing Iowa this year, but will be considering an alternative to take gaming revenues that had been going to pay off the Vision Iowa Fund funds, which are now paid off, and but funding for outdoor recreation and state park investments by about five to 10 million a year for five years. So given that there could be some part of that that could be applicable to cities, I just encourage a little bit of flexibility in some of the language instead of being quite so specific to Iowa that there's also some room for you to be supportive of.
Sure.
Something.
Sure.
Similar, or at least advocate to include cities instead of all of that going to state parks.
So the, there are a few different points there that are worth noting. I think that we name Iowa here in letter A and the REAP program. I think we can broaden those two points, as you suggested, Councilwoman, to speak broadly about any number of other programs as well.
I know that's your intent.
No, no.
I think it's worth saying it.
And.
Or similar programs or.
Sure, happy to make that change. There are some very specific ones that we already have our eye on that have to do with federal money that's pouring into the state that now will be directed towards water resources type projects, some of those for the very first time ever. We're early, taking our early looks at that right now, but because it's the Clive way, we're all over understanding what the opportunity might be. Large numbers, $20 million, $75 million spread across a couple of different programs. Many of them focused on some agricultural practices. The bulk of that 100 million coming to Iowa, though, that is water war resources related that the governor did speak about earlier this week are not going just straight into IDALS into the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, but actually are going to be administered by the Iowa Finance Authority so they get broad appeal to lots of different people with entities with different projects. So we'll follow that carefully.
Legislature will have some input on that, is that why?
I don't, I know, actually.
That kind of kept being the excuse yesterday for things. Well, let the federal funding pay for this, that, and the other thing.
Yeah.
They're going to reduce other taxes.
No, that is very interesting. The direction on at least that 100 million is going to be coming from the governor and the executive branch, is my understanding. They're going to be releasing their guidance on that. That grant program's going to work here later this month.
Well, anyway, since this is for the legislative priorities, I was, I am suggesting that maybe it not be quite so specific to give you some room to discuss other alternatives that apparently might be coming forward from the legislature.
Yeah. We will be scheduling our meetings with our representatives here before the session starts on the 10.
Other questions or points for staff on this item?
Is that?
A friendly amendment?
Yeah, right. That's what I'm asking, is that?
I can go ahead and make the change right now, actually.
Seconded with a friendly amendment.
You can wordsmith it later, you know, with similar programs, things like that.
There's consensus there. Seeing none, will the council please vote? Pass is five to zero. Pete, thank you. So before we move to discussion items, I'm going to suggest a 10 minute break. So let's reconvene at 7:55. It was my side. Always give credit where credit's due.
I just keep kind of pointing at, I'm like, this can't possibly be the last day that I sit.
I'm going to take a second.
I know, I know, I know. That was neat. Oh, isn't that wonderful?
That's going to take a couple. That's going to take a couple.
Let that out.
I just said the good looking. Just bring it up to the logo.
It was, um, it was especially fun to, when the vaccines first started coming out to work with our first responders. Because if we need to signal trust, oftentimes when we have our officers out there willing to put themselves out there, it makes, it makes a very big difference. I think that our work on vaccines and COVID response was very solid in 2020, uh, 21, but it wasn't the only positive story. When you look back at our strategic planning documents, we said Clive Public Safety Center, Clive Public Safety Center, get it right. And I'm real happy with what we've been able to do over just the month of December. And it's just the beginning, sort of the beginning chapters of the story we're going to tell. Our partners at DCI did a great job producing content for us to share. Our new website did a nice job presenting that in an attractive way, getting people there. And then to be able to welcome over 400 people, I estimate, on the day of the ribbon cutting and the community open house. That was as high a quality of engagement as you'll see. When we can do it person to person, when we can do it face to face with folks, that has some stickiness to it that a web posting or a Facebook post is never going to have, though it's important to do all those things. We also had some wonderful life-saving events this year. I just happened to pick the one from Genesis because we did some additional storytelling on that front where we actually have made a video emphasizing how important it is if you have a business or you're in the business of convening people for anything. Make sure you've got those tools. Make sure that you've got your D FIB there. Make sure that you know, have a plan. Should somebody go into that sudden cardiac arrest? I really want to thank Chief Rowe and his entire team for doing exceptional storytelling. We were able to come along with our storytelling resources to amplify that. And we look forward to doing more of them in 2022. I also had a lot of fun this year. These were some projects I had led, working with our students at Crestview Elementary and at Indian Hills Junior High. Indian Hills Junior High project was fun because this was also about water resources. And we have per our MS four permitting requirements, a lot of storytelling that has to be done along with it. Here's a fun example where we could do it. And it's also fun when we get to work with the Public Works Department. It was a cold day and sort of April, May, when we did this, but you could see him over here in this picture. This one was actually featured in the Moyn Register as well. So a wonderful chance to connect our public works teams with the storytelling projects beyond just the potholes and the snow. But here they were showing their fabrication work, showing their fun with the students and their care for this very important story around water in Clive. Goats will be a story for us blessedly for as long as we have the goats. This goat here in particular, Steve stole every headline in the entire country, it felt like about a week ago. While we're trying to talk about Clive Public Safety Center, Steve's out there being Ferris Bueller. And, you know, running all over Urbendale and Clive, fortunately he got home. The goats prove over and over again that they're great assets to the city from a storytelling standpoint.
Cory got picked up in La Crosse, Wisconsin. Had a client telling me about it.
One of the CNN channels had it on and an eight-year-old from Newton sent it to me and said, we watched this in school. And he was laughing and there's Steve.
Steve's the man. Steve's the man.
That we tubed.
For the record, we never told them the name was Steve, by the way. They figured it out from talking to residents.
Probably from talking to Steve, who knows?
Something from the beginning.
The Crestview kids did a, the Crestview students also did a wonderful job and credit to ComDev Department on this one, where we had them come and give us a lot of input on Lanan Park and what that park's going to be in the future. Wonderful to connect young people and any resident in Clive with projects that actually then have real stakes and real results. Similar to what we were just talking about with the eight foot sidewalk and five foot sidewalk. Here were kiddos making recommendations that have some real staying power now and have informed the larger 86th Street neighborhood project. Clive Festival, more neighborhood engagements, big mailings like Clive Connected. Uh, our help working after that terrible fire with Clive Community Services and a big fun day over at Lanan Park, which are just some of the beginnings of the improvements there. Plus what's going on with MetroNet and we've decided we've been doing a pretty good job staying on top of that casework. In fact, today I took a phone call on my cell and was able to go directly to a representative at MetroNet saying, hey, thanks you guys nicked his at COAX with MediaCom, can you go take a look? Got done, got done. Credit to Jared and the Public Works Department for really building that relationship. MetroNet showing us that they want to do this the right way. And we're happy to have been a part in their success by doing good storytelling to the neighbors. This is a slide, I'll give it a moment for some latency here. This is a slide that I actually included in my very first community engagement plan that talks about the engagements continuum. Moving from left to right in form on the left and power on the right. I think every city manager who's served in the last three, 30 years has seen this as well. But it's a great example of lots of different ways that we can choose to engage, but also understanding what to take to do that engagement well. The further you move to the right in that direct decision-making with residents, the higher the inputs are for us to do our work well. And also the more that this body here is in some ways sort of giving up its decision-making power. Most of the time, the city of Clive is communicating in this informed consult area. But on time to time, we do move more into that involve and collaborate. I would say that involve would be most of the time, the, the extent that we move down the continuum. Though there have been times where residents have pushed even harder to say that, no, actually they want to have a more direct say in what the outcomes look like as well. There's no, there are reasons to be in all of these different levels. I'm not advocating that we spend all of our time on the far right or the far left. I mention it because we have to bring intentionality to it. The further we move to the right, the more often we do those touches toward the right, the more resources we need to commit if we want to get a great result. So 2022 Engagement Plan, just like I've shown you in previous years, it's built to advance the strategic priorities. Those that I've bolded are some that I want to make sure that we're going to come back to and talk about in a little bit more specificity. These I've picked out because I think they really do lend themselves to community engagement. Some are a little bit more inside baseball or deal with one or two stakeholders potentially in the city. Just as an example, the flood prone property buyout strategy. Yes, that's going to be a story, but the part of it that's execute the brick strategy and the temporary use plan. That's staff doing that work. And then as we've kind of come up with our plan and you all have agreed that this is the right path, then we're going out and doing that engagement work. So I don't mean to say that there isn't going to be elements of the flood prone property strategy here that don't have a big lift, but I don't think it's going to be one of those biggest campaigns that we'll focus on in this coming year. I do want to come back to show you how the continuity from year to year is being preserved. There are a few on here that we can say we've kind of knocked out. MetroNet's still going to be with us, but the big part of their work is done. I don't think that will be the big lift that it was in our 2021 campaigns. And the K-9 unit, huge success from this past year. So much fun to have Dutch out there. His notoriety has already grown to the point that when Steve got on the loose, my son Bobby's first comment was, well, let's just go get Dutch, he'll find. And I bet Dutch would have found him actually in a heartbeat. Maybe we should have done that before we let him get hurt.
I got my money on Steve.
I've, I've been uptight and close with Dutch and I'm, I'm going Dutch on that one. There's a lot, the point here is there, there's quite a bit of continuity. The city finances and taxes is a great example of that. The Indian Hills Woods improvements as well. On to 2022. When we think about how we do this, I think one thing we're going to have to be very thoughtful about in the next 12 months is big capital projects that are happening right in the middle of neighborhoods, that are happening right in people's front yards. When we're doing that kind of improvement, disruption, change, imagining the future, I think this is one of those areas where that in-person commitment makes a big difference. We are going to have to keep doing that one-on-one and the bigger neighborhood meetings with Indian Hills Woods, especially definitely with Harbach. Having somebody like Tony out there doing the, just the day-to-day watching the contractors work on Clark Street. And we'll have somebody, if not Tony, somebody else doing the same kind of thing on Harbach, that is essential. And that's the kind of engagement that our public works team leads that we don't even think about. Or I don't necessarily always think about first when I'm thinking, oh, what's the city going to be doing from engagement standpoint? That day-to-day though, even on the phone calls that we take in Advent Services, it adds up to those positive touches and that trust balance that we want to keep very, very high. Lanan Park and Diamond Center is another one where getting in front of people face to face and then pairing that well with surveying tools that allow us to gather input is going to be very valuable. We're going to be doing our experimenting with programming. But we also need to make sure we're just open book and come to people and say, tell us what you think. What do you think about if we give you this prompt? How do you feel about that? If we give you this prompt, how do you feel about that? That's going to be a major lift for me. That's a strategic priority with, especially with the engagement around what kind of services might be coming out of the Diamond Center in the future that I'll be leading and that you can expect a lot of engagement work in that space. More broadly than that too, as we get the 86th Street Neighborhood Plan mentored and had some key next tactic steps identified, that will be a big communication headline for us at the appropriate time.
You're just talking about communications and such. And I understand, I'd like the future of Lanan Park and Diamond Center. Where I'm, where I'm a little nervous is the and the Diamond Center. That we don't get bogged down again, waiting for the Diamond Center decisions to do something on Lanan Park. That's just a big comment of we can't spend another four years studying Diamond Center at the expense of Lanan Park.
Absolutely. The Green Belt Landing fundraising and the start of construction. So we're in the dirt in 2022. We're putting huge dollars together if grant asks. We've had massive generosity now from NC Mic and the Community Foundation. Lots of lifting still to be done. Our communications need to come alongside that to tell an accurate story and to build enthusiasm and maintain momentum. Because we're not going to be done with Green Belt Landing in 2022. It's just the first step still. We'll need to make sure we do everything we can to keep that momentum high. Employee retention and recruiting, some of this is going to be from an engagement standpoint, more kind of more internally focused. I think that's actually good. I think the best advocates for people to cut, so where we're saying, come work for the city of Clive, the best advocates are the staff. Telling, hey, it's a great place to work. You'd be a great person to come work for us. There'll also be an external component of that. So we've done a nice job with our police recruiting, coming up with a very evergreen video. I've actually shot the video now for Parks and Public Works with our partners at Divine Production. And we're going to be doing the audio on that here shortly so that we're ready for the spring recruiting periods to go after some of those temporary parks positions, get some great folks to come in. And as we need to fill, it's been PW as well. I think we're going to have a nice video that allows us to talk about the variety of things that that team does. And I do need to make a small aside on that to say that I shot those videos for parks while they were doing work at Indian Hills Woods. If you've not gone out there to see just how precise those teammates have been with those, that, with those, those operators with that big equipment, they could give me a haircut. And that would be the best haircut I ever had in my life with, with a, with a track excavator. That's how good these guys have been. And it's really impressive to see their work. The last one I want to call out here is going to be the resident survey and data around the census. This is something that we've become pretty good at sharing information about. And we look forward to building on that past success. Our special section this year for questions will be related to survey, uh, service areas that we may want to expand that we do right now or new service areas that folks might like to see coming into the city that could potentially be tied to the Diamond Center. That's not just a question for the neighborhood that's most immediately around Diamond. It's really a question for the entire city. We have an opportunity there. If the council does want to give us a different direction on what we do with that special sec, uh, question section, we want to hear it. Please bring that to my attention so we can have a bigger discussion about as well. But at least my working idea right now is that we would be asking questions about that's bigger service area question.
Pete, on the MCS question of trust, if we're at 80%, remind me what the benchmark is.
Mayor, I do not recall what the benchmark is, except that we are far exceeding it. It's, so it's a double arrow that goes up on their markers saying that we've, um, they, they also, if I remember the narrative from the livability report, they say these were some of the highest that they had ever seen in the history of putting the question out there to communities.
Pete, where does MetroNet fit into all this? I know that obviously they're responsible for a certain amount of kind of proactive communication. I get the sense that they're still pretty far behind. They haven't gotten through much of the city. I can foresee as they start making more progress, a lot more because they're digging in people's yards. And I got a postcard from them and it's, you know, a five by seven postcard with very little information.
Yep.
Seems to me we should try to get out in front of that. So how does that fit into this?
Sure. So one thing I'd recommend is that we've got that great MetroNet video that we did this time last year. It's evergreen. It's the same kind of engagement process that they are trying to implement right now, though in our neighborhood councilman, I know they missed the lawn darts. We just did the postcards and this was after they had inadvertently, at the beginning of their project, sent us a bunch of stuff saying they were coming. And then eight months later, and that actually showed up. Yeah. I think the, the most important part, thing that we can do there, share the video again across our platforms. Push people to the project page and keep the project page updated. The nice thing about our project page too, is it shows the areas where their permits have been approved, where they're actively working and where things are pending or where things have been closed out. So it gives people a sense for how far they've actually made it through the city. I think they've actually made some pretty good progress this year with a lot of work still to be done. I can't, I don't know where they are with the rest of the metros, uh, West Side Cities at this point. The other thing that we can do now that I don't know if we would have been set up to do before is to handle this potentially as it rises up to the city level, somebody's pretty irritated or they just are completely in the dark. They don't know what this is about. I think we are set up to do a little bit like casework on this. The way that we handle the calls that come into City Hall right now is usually they come to me. And then I can email Jared, our right-of-way manager over at Public Works to get additional escalation if I need to. But I can also now go directly to our contacts with MetroNet and give them a heads up that we've got a constituent that's got a question.
Yeah, and that's very reactive, right? And so I guess I'm just wondering if, if we have any plans to be more proactive or if maybe we should have some plans to be more proactive. I don't know, I'm just.
We can, um.
Or have them be more proactive, right?
Yeah.
With the permit, can we require the lawn darts? Cause the lawn darts happened in my neighborhood. They're, they were effective, everybody's decks in our yard, right? It's like a fertilizing.
Yep.
Flag.
Yep.
But that would have got your attention more than a postcard in the mail. Can we require those things with the permitting?
No, I know it's certainly with permitting.
Under our current code, some we can require.
Come on.
We can ask.
As far as requiring, I mean, that's going to take, that was something that they kind of stated they would do as part of this agreement. We would just go back to them and say, hey, this whole agreement was based on your procedures and you're saying this is how you're going to proceed. We need to make sure that's happening and we can push them a little bit on. But as far as any leverage, other than saying this agreement was based on that kind of action by you, there's nothing in our code.
We can follow up with them on that though.
We can put some pressure.
Yep.
That's a great front page piece for the utility newsletter. That's the, that's our big megaphone. We can go back to it with a little review of what they got done in this year.
We head into the spring when we know more activity is going to start happening. I don't know. I mean, I can just foresee some future issues with that.
Yep.
What's the percentage of completion right now?
I'm, I've got, I can look at it here. I don't know off the top, but I'll.
Lasted through my neighborhood.
In this?
Yeah, I mean, from 156 West.
They did a neighbor.
The locates are happening on my street right now.
So.
They're still doing some follow-up work, but I mean, it's.
They're on Berkshire.
They just did the locates on my street.
Berkshire along the next to Schuler Elementary is active right now too. Final slide, the, how are we going to do our work? This is almost identical from our previous year. And I think it speaks to some of the strength that we've built up in some of our communications tools. CityofClive.com, front door, make sure we do well with that. We've been emphasizing among departments how important it is, especially to keep things like the project pages update, updated. It's going to be also very important that as we move into the new year with a new council and a new mayor, that we get your pages all looking exactly the way that you want them as well. I am planning it when we get to March to do some new pictures for all of council as well and some new group shots as well. Have those professionally done for everybody as well to make sure that we're putting a good brand forward that is reflective of the good work that's done by this group. We'll want to make sure that we keep using our surveying tools. I do think we have a good opportunity to use our Polco digital surveying tool as we engage the neighbors and residents about Lanan and Diamond and what their future is going to be, some of the service areas we might be looking to get into. Text for non-emergency communication, specifically winter ordinance and flood-related information. The plan right now is to roll with what we've used in this past season that was powered by our website. We don't have the hands right now to start taking on brand-new tools like a bigger texting service that would be one way. Certainly not to take on one that'd be two-way for people to make service requests. But that's something we've continued to research and think about how we might do that in the future. It's becoming a sort of more normative expectation around residents, I think in the metro. Johnston's got a particularly popular two-way text communication system that I've been getting more information on that I think could be a good fit for us to consider down the path. We'll keep our, growing our audiences organically across social media platforms and keep working with our changing group of journalists, local journalists. It's even in three, four years now I've been with the city, it's remarkable what the turnover's been. We need them. It's really, really hard for us to do that trust work that I'm talking about. And if we don't have partners who want to tell these stories with us as well, and those local journalists are, are those, those partners. So we'll keep doing our best to engage with all of them. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions also, Susan?
I like the idea of the text to drive people. Do we have anything else we're doing right now emailing or anything else? I'm just noticing, I feel like I have to proactively go look. I'm not getting anything that drives me to look at new content on the website. And I think that would be valuable.
So the idea that you're right about using our platforms to keep pushing people back to CityofClive.com, that is the strategy. 5,000 plus mail pieces to go out every month is our biggest way to keep moving people who are engaging with content and that's print space back to the website. The popularity of the QR code coming back has helped us make that flip, which is nice. But also simple URLs like save cityofclive.com, cityofclive.com. And then having those most important things that people usually come to the site for right up front center, whether it's the city site, the library side of the park site. I think it makes moving from print to digital better than what it was previously with the other website. And I think that we make a substantial investment in, in pushing people in that way. From a social media standpoint, the mayor's tree lighting was sort of a standalone thing that lived in social media. There was no companion piece except for a date and a calendar event that existed back on CityofClive.com. But even that, I think, is a valuable kind of crossover. We want people to start thinking about that calendar is the calendar. Whether it's for garbage pickup delays, recycling delays because of a holiday, or it's something like a special event. The cities, the library and the parks pages specifically were built to highlight those types of events because they do so much programming. And helping them share that across platforms is something that we prioritize, but certainly we can continue to do better.
So on what you're talking about mailing, that's the utility insert. Okay.
And that doesn't.
Had to set to push to have people get that electronically instead. So that happens to go to my husband, I don't get that. What can we do to get this more broadly to people and maybe teenagers? I mean, there might be more people who would like to hear from the city.
Yep. This is a strategic priority that was, uh, we did not make as much progress on last year as I wanted to, which is bringing some uniformity to the way we do newsletters across the city, print or digital. We've got one in library, one in parks, economic development, utility newsletter. Right now they all have a look, a little different look and feel from a formatting standpoint. And then that's just because of the generations that they were developed in the platforms we use. I think we should bring some formality, some, some continuity to that.
So do we have a single landing page on the website where you can go in and subscribe to all the different newsletters we?
Not at this time, no. And some of that is easy to fix, but it's, like I said, this entire, bringing these things together is a project that really only I can lead. And from among all, not from a, because of an arrogance or anything like that, it's just that I'm the only one who's kind of got the situational awareness of our, each one of them sits. From a priority standpoint with my time, that has not been something that has risen as high as some of these other communications strategies.
You know, Pete, when we look at how do we get our message out? And there's a lot of messages and you've gone through a lot of them out. One of the natural advantages that the city Clive has is our parks. They're strategically located in each of our districts. They're spread out all over the city. And sometimes what you see in various parks all have a very simple, and I know we have one and one of them, but it's just kind of a, uh, a board with plexiglass at the top and you can put newsletters, you can put different types of information right that. My sense is as you want to reach out perhaps teenagers, Susan, or younger people that utilize those parks, that might be a platform that we could utilize a little bit more to get our message out. Certainly it's supposed to your newsletter, having what I'm seeing more and more now is, you know, a digital screen that, that has information on it, what have you. Just a thought.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
A QR code you're talking about, crazy, put those in the parks.
QR codes, absolutely.
The temporary signage that goes up for Clive Festival, another good example of that we put out in the parks.
Light years ahead of where we were though.
In fact, one of the hardest things with this plan is what do we say no to? Because of limited bandwidth.
Well, you're working through it.
Yep.
Yeah.
As a guy who likes to tell stories, um, because I feel like they are our way, our path forward to curing a lot of the distrust that exists among people in our community now. So we can come to know each other and our different experiences and identities. I feel that this is really, really important work. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to do it. I'm grateful we invest as much as we do. I still look at the, what we could do and I say, boy, there's a lot ahead of us when we're ready to do it and when it strategically makes sense.
Pete, thank you.
Good job.
Okay, we'll, we'll move to the next ad and then, uh, which is the Water Resources Master Plan Discussion. Pete, carry us through that one.
Thank you, Your Honor. So my colleague Stephanie Fleckstein is making her way up here to the podium.
Nice to see you.
Stephanie is.
Makes you bring with us.
Been a while. It has been.
Fortunately, Stephanie always gets the end of the, you know, end of the agenda.
Oh, it's been very entertaining. Just changed nothing.
Did I, I got, it got a little cold back there, right? Trying to keep everybody happy. So, um, thanks to everybody back there for putting up with the cold temps too. Hopefully it's feeling a little bit better for, okay.
Yeah, Parker's on now.
I see, I see Roxanne back there still shivering. I'm sorry, Roxanne. So we are continuing to make progress on the Water Resources Master Plan, but I'd say we're on third base. We're now getting into home and looking pretty strong. Got some things that we want to share with you all tonight about tactics, immediate next steps that we want to take so we keep the momentum building and really realize value from all this hard work we've done here in the first two years of implementing this plan. That's what we're going to talk about with some of these immediate things. So a lot of it is work that's going to be led by Rachel. As our Water Resources Engineer thinks that you see that involve modeling and compliance with our MS four permit and making sure that when we go to the next round of permitting in 2024, that we're submitting better materials and a better, more complete picture of the entire water resources system, the stormwater system in Clive than we've ever been able to put forward before. Better compliance with the law, better preparation for what the laws may be in the future. Better data that helps us make good decisions about where we prioritize capital improvements and operating and maintenance. There are key, a couple of key headlines though, that you'll see here in the tactical plan that are not intended to be must-dos like it's set in stone. They are really questions that are coming to all of you because they have a big budget implication. The biggest being, we're going to be proposing in the model that we've put together, the financial model here, to use the stormwater utility to pay for half the salary of two new, uh, natural resources positions that would be based in the leisure services department. This will also be a point that comes forward during the budget discussions and we still are, here as a staff, kind of working out how it all fits together. So there could still be some changes from what you see tonight. But what I want to emphasize is that with all of the kinds of green infrastructure that's coming on board, the improvements to Indian Hills Woods, the Clark Street Bio Retention Cells, the responsibilities for the pond in Shadow Creek. There's a long list. These things take maintenance, like all infrastructure takes maintenance. And right now we don't have necessarily, we think the teammates we need to be able to do that maintenance work with all these types of water resources facilities, the way that we need to, or the way the residents will expect us to as well. So that's part of what the discussion is going to be tonight. The other big headline that you'll see here in our discussion for the tactical plan is standing up a grant program. That's a standalone strategic priority that the council identified during August work. And I've put together a separate memo that is just a starting point for what we might be able to do. It is informed by previous discussions that we've had. The big idea though with that is that we are trying to take some of the learning we've done from neighboring communities to take an incremental approach to march up to a larger level over time. The big impediment to success with these programs, engagement with these programs has been storytelling. And a lot of our other neighboring places, they don't have enough people interested or aware of what these best practices might be to use up the dollars. And using up the dollars on one big project is an option. But the benefit to Clive is to get more and more people using these practices on their yards and having their neighbor come over and say, hey, why'd you do that? What's that soil quality restoration thing that you did? That's how we start getting more and more square feet of Clive catching, holding, infiltrating water, which over time is going to create a more resilient city to this massive amount of. which over time is going to create a more resilient city to this massive amount of water that could potentially be in our future. Last thing we're going to talk about tonight then will be that updated financial model. We want to show you how all these things we're proposing fit. And also make sure that they still align with the preferences that you've previously expressed for a tiered residential rate structure. And also to make sure we get that grant program up and running and a couple of other things as well. Any preliminary questions before I turn it over to Stephanie to take us through the deck? It is welcome. Yep, we're going to bounce between a few different documents and as we do, Stephanie and I'll kind of step forward to take the lead.
Great, thank you.
Let's just go, you might have to click on that slide.
Am I doing it?
Oh, it don't, I'm sorry. I don't think I had that turned on. You're just going to use the keyboard.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so as Pete was describing, we have the tactical plan broken into a few different sort of timelines. So the first ones that we'll talk through are the tasks on the immediate horizon. So these were identified as really high priority and things that we wanted to address and tackle first. The first listed here is to define the responsibilities and create job descriptions for the natural resource team positions within the leisure services department pending council approval and stand up the natural resources team for the fall of 2022. And that would include a team leader and two specialists. And the two specialists are really the key part that we'll talk about in the financial plan going forward. The second there is to change the stormwater, water resources, utility residential rate structure. That should be pretty familiar to you as, as we compared those opposing ways of the way we could most equitably or most fairly distribute the way that rate is collected. And we selected that to be based on the square, square footage of the residential property. And consequently, the impervious area, if you'll remember that. That's the structure we selected and that'll show up as well in our graphs. The third is to establish a water resources grant program, begin grant making and to consider separate tree and SQR programs in future years. So the grant making framework and final budget approval of in the spring of 2022, the timeline there is to have the first grant awards in the fall of 2022 or possibly into the winter of 2023. There, I believe this has been completed already to submit the IDALS.
Yeah, I want to call this out as also some great work that Rachel's done on this. So one of the priorities was go get grants where you can grab them. Let's not use just Clive Ratepayer money to get this stuff done. Big opportunity came right in front of us. Water quality initiative, urban water quality initiative grant from the Iowa Department of Land and Agricultural Stewardship IDALS. We, using the successful Polk City application that they submitted along with Polk's, with the Polk County last year. We have created our own application again in partnership with Polk County, where we would do a host of different soil quality restoration projects in Clive over the course of 2022 and going into 2023. The number that we've put together for our pre-application submittal is a hundred thousand dollars. A chunk of that would be used to help us offset the cost of doing all the work on the Harbach pilot. A big part of that is soil quality restoration. We do that well, we start to trim down the cost of that Harbach project. Second would be a pilot or an example project in one of our city parks, big area. Get a big bang for the buck and get it all done in one spot. This is probably one of our larger parks where we do this, like a Campbell and have a chance to do some storytelling around that. And then a portion of it also then would be available to folks citywide to apply. And that would be the one that has a cost share where we would take on about half the cost. And then the resident would pay the other portion of that. And that would be a more traditional type of soil quality restoration grant or reimbursement type program. So if we're successful, that takes this discussion about how big we go with grants or sort of the equivalent of grants in year one from ten thousand dollars, which we would still be able to do to soil quality restoration work that pushes us potentially total up into the six figures. So hopefully we're successful with that application. Then we're happy to answer more questions about how we would actually get that work done because it would be a lift for staff, but I think we've got the people to do it.
So following on with that, SQR is certainly pretty high on that priority list. There's also as budget allows, consider consideration for an annual tree sale towards the end of 2022. And then with those, those sales beginning in the spring of 2023. So those should all represent the various programs that we talked about as far as the incentives for practices throughout the city. The next bullet there is implementing improved inspection data collection process. So with, with that taking place in the fall of 2021 with that kickoff. And then with the inspections through the fall of this year and spring of next year, really improving that quality and having it consistent and clean. And then through subsequent years of analyzing that data and making sure that it is as helpful and informative as we intended it to be, but continuing that, that cleanup process with the data collection.
And the inspection piece, is there a proposed correction or enforcement side of the inspection as we go around and inspect these? I can't remember how many, but you put two people on and is there a correction enforcement piece?
Yes, and actually counsel, I go back to a comment you made early on in the spring. I think one of the, wearing one of these presentations when we were talking about all these public or private facilities. How can we talk about sort of what we need to put against them without inspecting and knowing what they are first? So this is our commitment to getting the inspections done right. The public inspections that we did last year, we're sort of our first time around on an annual basis, getting those all done correctly. And from that, we identified sort of what we think for hours of work are going to be necessary to do not only future inspections, but some of the maintenance work as well. This bigger question though, about if you find a private facility that's deficient, are you gonna start the process to sort of poking, poking, change it, improve it? I don't think we've got the answer there preferred, figured out quite yet. I think there's needs to be more council discussion about what they were comfortable with. Not all of those facilities have the potential to deliver great return. That doesn't absolve the private property owner from maintaining their facility according to what they said they were going to do and what their legal documents say that they need to do with their property. But from a just pragmatic results standpoint, there's not necessarily a big return for the broader community. The trade, trade relies on the stormwater system. If we ask somebody to do something around a parking lot as opposed to an area where we think there's, if we like dug out a bunch of trees that had grown up in a detention area and we returned the volume there, we got maybe a better result. I only use those as examples. I'm not the water resources engineer who could tell you where it's going to make more or less sense to change an outlet structure, default, you know, get the vegetation out. But the cost for doing that and those private facilities would, and it's our thinking right now, still fall to that entity, the private entity that doesn't, hadn't done the maintenance. The idea behind the grant program though, in part is if we're going to go and do that poking, it'd be nice also to be able to say to them, but you're not in it necessarily by yourself. You might also now be able to apply to a city for a city grant that might help alleviate some of that pain.
I'm, I'm good with that on the surface, I guess a bit, but it is an agreement they made with us when they developed the property. And so as we're chasing trees and, and stormwater and all that, as you, if you're going to put inspectors on, to me, there has to be enforcement. I'm not for inspectors to inspect, to grab data, to grab data, never to do anything with the data.
Sure.
Right? And so the data is then used for enforcement, not just poking, it's your deficient 20 trees on your property. I mean, to get 20 residents to plant trees is going to be much harder than to go back to these commercial properties or private property. Whoever did the development say, you have to have 20 more trees on here by your agreement with us, put them on. Fairway area, it's not theirs, but that area, wrongly say fairway and pick on them, but that development there, you know, they brought in goats, they did the cleaning. It still needs more work for volume, but those are areas that we should go in and say, it has to happen. Because collectively over these 50, 60, 80, 100 privates, it's going to make a difference. And it's the principle of it, if we're going to spend money on inspectors to grab data, make change. Enforce it. Right?
There is a legal requirement to do the inspections also just in by their own right, but your, your logic there is sound, very sound. And that's why I kind of skipped ahead here to say that this isn't just a plan now where we have a few things that we knock them off and they're done. This is about a commitment now to treating this utility much more like we do the other utilities with regular assessments of how they're performing and goals that are set. And then a report back to all of you and the rest of the community about what the strategic priorities are going to be moving forward. That's what this bullet here is about and you would expect, if it's council's agreeable to it, you should expect in about October timeframe next year that we'd come back with that kind of report, which would include data on how our inspections, what they've surfaced. So that we can then take those next questions about what are we going to do with it now? Are we ready to go and push?
You're really trying to establish the parameters upfront with the inspections, aren't you? And then.
We need data.
So, so you, so you get the data and then you, then you determine what enforcement is going forward based on standards that are created by the data that you collect. That's the long term.
Yeah, but to me that's a little backwards, right? Like we know what the standards are, I hope. I hope HGR knows what the standards are. I hope Doug, I hope others know what the standards are today, right? What they should be for this water, stormwater detention, what we're looking for. Build the program. The whole program, right? The inspections and the penalty. It's like saying, we're going to do a speed limit thing, but we're not going to penalize you until we figure out how many people are speeding on Hickman. You know, we're going to count the speeders and then we're saying, eh, we do have a problem. Let's ticket them. Let's get the whole plan and start enforcing as we inspect. Again, I mean, professor and my major professor told me, don't collect data if you're just collecting data, to collect data and use it, right? Or don't collect it.
Sure. So the, that engagement responsibility and that enforcement responsibility is one that I would like to get, so I guess some more input from the council on where all the other council members are at at this as well. Because we're talking about a, a, a difficult to read letter for a homeowners association. We're talking about that engagement with the HOA and with that big corporate entity in Clive with, but a bunch of property where they didn't go back and put the trees back in where they were supposed to. We know what these touches feel like. We had some with our friends at Willis. Or remember, you'll remember when they were doing the improvements to do their parking. That's over by Chicago Bridge and Iron and that back and forth, that iterating, that compromising at times. It's, it is very, very a bunch of hands-on process and it does something that really requires us to dip into that trust account as well, as well. Where we go and start asking people to do things that they don't want to do, which is can be completely the right thing to do still.
I was going to say that. I mean, it's really easy to talk about it philosophically. I get where you're coming from. But you know, sending stuff to, to residents and just mandating that you, you've got to make this change.
But it won't be very many residents. I didn't agree to put any trees on my property at my house. These are developments that agreed when they developed the property that they have X stormwater or a hundred trees or whatever. And now they have 30. And until we kick something triggers us to change because they want to add a garage to their commercial property or add some square footage. Then we say, ah, 20 years later.
And I think there's, there's gravations to it too, though, right? So it's like rental inspections, well, you know, these two or three things aren't really that big of a deal, so we're not going to enforce that at this time. But if, you know, your, your whole roof is leaking and you're causing, you know, some real safety issues, well, that's different. So there's, there's different levels and I don't know if we can know that right now, maybe we can, but I don't know, I think at least for me, it, this is also nebulous at this point. It's really hard to, to, to make those decisions. I don't know.
And if I could add to that, your honor is, again, I think it's part of the data collection is I think for the council, for us to start making some decisions on if there is an enforcement that we definitely want to push on because there's gross things that we're missing that are substantial versus to Pete's point earlier where there might be some where it's not going to make that big a difference in the grand scheme of things. And it's kind of like, where do you want to spend your time and your capital on pushing those? There might be some where you really, really want to push. And you might, and you might have to go to all, all the way down the legal pathway. Because again, in some of these situations, that's might be what it takes to require, if you wanted to use again, a stick approach. There's going to be expenses to do that on some of these parcels. There's going to be.
But we're, we're suggesting hiring two people to do inspections.
We're not.
No. Have two half people or?
No, that the inspection team is already there, Rachel.
Yeah, so our inspectors in public works, they perform the public facility inspections last year. And so they would, they would be basically fitting that in in the winter when construction is not busy anyway. And so it's not.
On the ponds.
The, the people we're proposing would be natural resources specialists that would be doing work on public property, public maintenance of our green infrastructure. So not, I apologize if they're not making that clear. Inspections are something different. They live with the, with the public works team. They are responsible for the compliance with the MS four permit that we have. And then they would also be that key partner in what do we do then after we've identified a deficiency and need to communicate about getting it corrected with the private property owner? They wouldn't be the only player though, involved with that discussion. The two positions we're recommending, and we'll get into more discussion on that a bit, are purely in the leisure services department to maintain these types of green infrastructure and other water resources that we increasingly bring into our system. The ponds, the oxbows, the bio retention cells on Clark Street as examples.
Yeah, I think we need to have a lot more detail before we start saying, we're going to just put the heavy hand down and say, everyone's got to comply to all of this stuff because we're collecting the data. I think we gotta, we gotta have some parameters around it. Cause to Matt's point, there are certain things where you know what, it's, it's really important that we enforce it, but there may be other things that it's not worth using our capital of, of trust and, and being heavy handed about everything. We need to see what those mean. At this point, I don't even have any clue as to what some of these examples would be where we would start enforcing. So I need to understand those details a lot better before we start saying, hey, we're going to start really enforcing this stuff.
I'm with you in that. I, I'm just saying, if we're inspecting these ponds, these detention ponds every year, for what? To say it's not working and then we go to the next year and we inspect them again and we say, yeah, those are good, those are bad. And then we go to the next year and we inspect them again and at what end? Let's not inspect them.
Well, what?
And just the ponds, let's deal with just the ponds, not trees and flowers and all that.
So the inspections are happening today. And I can tell you that my HOA, ours was inspected. Our, our facility was inspected and it was deemed deficient. Direction was given to the HOA to fix it. So we spent the money to fix it. So that's happening today. I think you're talking about people to really maintain our public green infrastructure facilities, right? And then.
Yeah, so as a city.
We need to be clear about what we're talking about.
Sure.
I think it is too. I've stretched it to two.
Two different things here.
Right.
Rachel, the inspector, MS four inspections, public works.
Happening now.
Requirements. Requirements by law.
By the.
We've, we've started, we started with public. This would be the first year that we do private. We're going to focus on priority BMPs. And so ones that are more likely to have issues, the ones that might be a greater benefit to the city if they are operating correctly. And then what I, what I did do with those public, I don't know if you remember this, I presented kind of a list of what, where we're deficient, what we need to do. I can do that again for this round and then maybe come back to you and kind of make decisions from that.
Although that, that's always good. I don't, I'm not trying to derail us here, but I, but I think we got off on inspection stuff when we really need to be somewhere else. And that's two people that are maintaining green infrastructure.
Sure.
For, for the city, the public green infrastructure.
Sure. Let's go ahead and, and move to that. There are a number of other items here on the tactical plan. But many of those are related then to things that staff will be doing somewhat internally. So the big one of, as I gave you the headline when we started, this responsibility is of a proposed natural resources team. This is leisure services, parks. The idea here is as we brought on more and more green infrastructure, more and more water resources related operating and maintenance activities that, and with many of them being actually in parks, that this would be a team that was necessary to make sure we were doing that good infrastructure maintenance, the same way we do maintenance with our gray infrastructure. That first list would be a set of some of the types of projects that are already in, in place or will soon be in place where these types of people will be at work. I'd point back to the conversations we've had at Clark Street. Those bio retention cells are in people's front yards. There is significant concern that the city may not be maintaining them to the extent that they want. Those bio retention cells are in people's front yards. There is significant concern that the city may not be maintaining them to the extent that they want to maintain. We're not going to be able to do it just on our own. We are going to need that partnership from the neighbors. But we're going to have to put in quite a few hours of our own time as well. These teammates that we're talking about bringing on board would be doing quite a bit of that type of work. Trees. Not only are we talking about future trees, but even existing trees, all those nuisance trees that hang over from the green belt. Helping out if we end up with a problem after a derachio that goes through. Trees are a major lift. These teammates would be doing that type of work. Vegetation management, we've made a big commitment between goats and other practices to make sure that we are maintaining a healthy green belt. Whether that's through mowing or spraying or other strategies, we think that these folks can doing some of that work. And then also they would be doing things to go beyond that, like snow operations. As we bring cul-de-sacs onboard, as we add more trail, that's a lot more. Snow removal that the pub, that the parks team, the leader services team is doing on a year, on a, on an event to event basis. And these folks would be involved in that type of activity. Finally, then, as we look to volunteers and other seasonal employees who would be helping with this. These are the kinds of teammates who will have the skillset and the knowledge to be able to lead those types of teams and go out and get lots of work done. So this is our initial concept ideas only, ideas. We think that it aligns with what we need to accomplish in the water resources master plan over time. But it is a budget discussion as well, maybe even primarily. And so it needs to still go through the process that you will annually go through as you're forming your budget. So tonight we're giving you the concepts about what these folks would do and hopefully articulating the need. Uh, so you understand it and can compare that to other needs as well.
One of our thinkings on this is we know obviously the natural resources side is going to be the warm weather months. We tried to look for a balance, right? We know that we're continuing to add to Pete's point, adding cul-de-sacs. Now we're looking at some major reinvestments in parks in the green belt, like Green Belt Landing. Porter Shelter, Campbell over time, that the, the needs are growing in that area. And we've had, you know, the same staff count, for example, for the last ten years. Uh, in part, in fact, we were down and we added some back to get back to that same number. And so what we're trying to do is we know that there's a need here on the natural resources side as we continue to advance this, uh, in our community. And recognizing there also are some other needs, uh, as well in the winter months. And so we're trying to balance that. So what essentially we're looking at, and you're going to see this in the next, uh, uh, the next council meeting when we start talking about the utilities. And this utility in particular is how could we do some cost sharing between? The water resources utility and the general fund, for example, if they're doing park work. So what we're trying to do is find multiple revenue sources to, uh, propose these positions again in concept at this point that we plan to present to you in January.
Let's fifty percent out of the water resources and then fifty percent or fifty percent out of the water utility and then fifty out of the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, the stormwater utility.
And that's where like our park staff historically is, that's where they're supported out of is the general fund today. And so knowing that these, you know, now that we're natural resources team, now we're getting into those water resources type functions. Is can there be some shared responsibility between the utility and, and the general fund in terms of how these positions are funded going forward?
And the thought is two people on that team then?
Two, two people, what we would do is we would take an existing person from our team, um, to try to create a supervisor and a team of two. So basically be a team of three. So it would be shifting some of the responsibilities that we're doing in parks today without one existing position. So our vision, a long-term vision is, is three with one, one existing, two additions. So ultimately have a team of three.
So does this make sense from a financial standpoint? Are we stressing the utility more than it can actually handle? So I want Stephanie, if you would, come back up to, to kind of help us walk through this. But this will be a similar set of slides to what you saw in previous presentations. Comparing different alternatives for financial models. We were going to be taking a look here about what the tiered rate looks like and what that means for how rates are going to increase over time. And then confirm that some of these new costs that would be paid for by the stormwater utility actually fit. And don't exceed the revenues that could be generated. Steph.
So you'll see here on the bar graph, we've got three categories there. So CIP funding. Paying for staffing and then the incentive grant program. So those three bars you can see through twenty twenty-two. Oh, that's supposed to say twenty thirty-two. Forgive me. So the total, right? The total range is, uh, changed from year to year. So you'll may remember when we looked at a slide similar to this previously, um, we wanted to stick in that middle. And one of the adjustments that I made, uh, to make sure that we were hitting our other metrics is we reduced some of the CIP spending in this group of years. Um, after twenty twenty-six, the rest of our planning through twenty twenty-six is pretty well solidified. Uh, but to be able to balance a few of those things, um, that's where some of that reduction occurs.
So the twenty twenty-six, the extent of the CIP you just approved is like, in this model, identical to what you've just approved. Just so you make sure we're comparing apples and apples here, but we've changed here is the tail. For what past twenty-six would look like for the amount of capital spending that the utility would kick in potentially for the CIP type projects. Does that make sense? I'll say, I'm sorry, I'll try again. Everything that you see in the mod, what you're going to see in the model is consistent with the CIP you just approved. That CIP only looks out past twenty twenty-six. Our modeling looks out to twenty thirty-two. It's in those out years past twenty twenty-six where we've been making some of those adjustments. But don't, don't be concerned that there's any gaming with the CIP that you just approved. It's the numbers that you just approved that are reflected here in the model.
But wouldn't something else have to give if we're adding from this?
We'll be able to show you how we think, if you go, Stephanie, back to slide seven there. The CIP annual range from two sixty to five fifty for all the years that are in the current CIP. They are the accurate numbers. Fifty percent for the salary for the stormwater tax, the incentive program that marches up to fifty thousand by twenty twenty-six, no debt service. That's what we've put into the model and that's what we want to show you all tonight to see how that's squares with the revenue that would actually be created by the, by the utility over that time as well.
So this slide should show in twenty twenty-four, when that change would happen in the rate structure. So you'll see our bar graph is real consistent amongst the way that that ERU is applied. And then you'll see the different classes really start to divide, um, thereafter. This yellow line here is the percentage increase year to year of what that, that rate looks like. Um, and you'll see that we did drop down quite a bit. So the balance between what our CIP spending and what the increase in our rate year to year, that's a little bit of that give or take. If we are comfortable keeping this rate increase year to year higher, we can certainly then, um, fund more projects. But as we wanted to keep it with that moderate model that we had, uh, reviewed previously, I wanted to keep that rate increase low, the way that that one had shown. And again, you'll see, um, in comparison to our previous examples of, um, having a surplus of funding and then not having enough, um, reserves with that dashed line of total revenue. That we do balance out in our current scenario here. Um, are there any other questions on the model? I do have it available if there's any, uh, specific questions that we want to get into.
Susan.
Okay. I am. Trying to discern from this, it seems like there's quite a bit allocated to staff with less available for projects. And I just want to make sure we're planning appropriately for what we think we need to accomplish. I will comment that I thought some of the tasks that were listed as being, um, assigned to these personnel. Looked like public works type of projects to me. So a little bit curious about how this will function between leisure services and public works. But I just have been looking forward to having the additional rate availability for some projects. So I want to not be automatically assuming it should be going to people.
Sure. So. Going back to the CIP discussion that we had. And Doug, I'm going to need your input on this one too, to make sure I get this right. It's not just the half a million dollars annually that the utility will be kicking in. Some, but you break that out, if it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, that's going toward the flood prone property buyout program from this utility. That's correct, right Doug? Doing this off without a hundred and fifty from that. Actually, yeah, we can show you. Yep. Right. So this is through twenty twenty-six there, identical to what was approved in the CIP. So it's significant funding. Uh, year to year, there's some variance based on the way the projects are, are scheduled. But this is at the very least consistent with the amount that's been kicked in by the utility in previous years.
I know you're matching the amount. I'm just trying to identify how they're being spent.
So if you look.
How much is people and how much is projects?
We can make that, uh, calculation. What you see in front of you right now is what is being spent on, I guess, what I'd call projects. Even the spending on people though is spending on projects. It's the operating and maintenance of these facilities that we have. It's the improvements that we want to make to the green belt. So I see that there's a distinction that we can draw between personnel and capital when we put it on a budget. But when it comes to the overall performance of our stormwater system, they are completely interlinked.
Well, one of the things driving my question is that it seemed like we needed to start out on a pretty limited basis in terms of supporting. The tree planting, some of the other incentives that would go to residents. But we're putting quite a bit toward people. So I just want to make sure it makes sense to start out right away, expanding staff by this much. Is there a way to do it with one person, you know, one supervisor with one person, making sure that. There's enough work for them to do. I don't know. I just like to have a very clear sense about. Be able to make enough bang with the. Getting the incentive programs in place that that's actually noticeable in addition to just adding to our staff.
So the, the sizing for the incentive program, we started with that amount of ten thousand dollars to make sure that we have the participation. And that we can build, build up to that. That's why we started so low. We can reflect, you know, what that participation, you know, or requests or what those, um, applications come in. That can certainly be changed as far as what the comparison of, of CIP dollars. We had previously been building out. Five hundred and fifty thousand, uh, for that, for that, um, year to year as, as a consistent number with, with some variation between it. And the position that we're talking about it for the additional tech is sixty-five thousand a year. So, um, in order of magnitude difference of what that total, um, you know, budget for each of those.
Sixty-five thousand you said for the FTE?
Yes.
That's all in?
Fifty percent share.
Fifty percent share.
But that's with benefits and everything.
That's what we tried. That was the number we tried to calculate. It isn't precise.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. But yes, we didn't want to just go what salary is, it's what it costs to actually have somebody on board.
Well, one thing that, uh, that's important, and you'll see this in the utility cash flow at your next meeting, is we already have, um, some staff that are funded out of the utility. So this bar graph that you see on the slide really reflects that the, you know, the light green is staffing, the dark green is CIP. So you can see, you know, you're fifty, it's kind of fifty fifty. And then when you get into some of those out years, you're starting to get a little bit more heavy on staffing than CIP. So it is, you know, definitely a discussion point, um, where we have it flat at five fifty today. And the, the other thing that we're also going to talk about with the utility is for larger projects that we again deem as priorities. At what point do we start to tap the debt service component? With that being. Stormwater, water resources abated, general obligation bond. So we would bond like we normally would and the utility would pay that over time. Um, so there is abilities that we want to talk about at least of how you do that in this utility over time to get above that five fifty number. That's cash funded CIP projects today.
And, and that certainly made a difference in our, our different scenarios of whether we included debt service or not at all. And everything we're presenting tonight has no debt service.
No debt service at this point, yeah.
Give more detail on the incentive program.
So this was in your packet. This is our preliminary ideas about what a incentive program, grant program could look like. Over the next five years. One of the things I outline here is that. From what we've learned from other communities, building up that interest. Takes time. So making a large financial commitment to a grant program before we've built an audience of people that would actually utilize it. Is not, I guess, uh, what, from what we've heard, doesn't not seem as like a realistic scenario.
You guys are on track with the incremental approach. Go ahead.
Okay. So.
I think incremental is good.
It just doesn't apply very much.
We've got a pretty sizable project going on right now that, and you guys know what I'm talking about.
Hmm.
I'm going to keep coming back to it.
Yep.
You know, because we've had others that have been substantial. Not to that level, but to the fifty to eighty thousand dollar level. And an individual residence. And so I, I, I look at this and. Should those initial numbers be adjusted to some level?
So the, um.
And then I'm interested in the criteria as well.
Sure. So.
I apologize.
No, no, not, not a problem there. So you're, you're right. There is a trade-off to going incrementally early. What does that mean for the mega project that's sitting out there that needs to be done, like a country club lake, for example? And does the city believe there's an interest there in awarding a grant? That would help make improvements to the way that that facility operates. One important distinction that I think is critical to any program is that these are for improvements overall to the system. Better infiltration, better performance of existing infrastructure of facilities, not standard maintenance.
Right.
What would never be covered in this, as I am outlining here, is pond, uh, silt removal from a pond. However. I think it's so important to discuss whether we would put a grant out there for silt removal from a bay that has been constructed on that pond to catch the silt before it gets into the bigger pond. Same way with big vegetation removal. If there, for example, is, uh, a private property owner who gets into or a homeowner association there, there's been some turnover. And people get into kind of inheriting a, an ill-performing facility that's been overrun with big trees and they've got a big, big mess in front of them to get it out. Would we be willing as a way to incent them to do it? Go in with a grant, award a grant to help them offset the cost, but not a grant necessarily that paid for the most of it. We'd still need to have a ceiling on what some of these awards could be. I'd point to Urbandale as a good example. They over years have built up a, a pretty well subscribed grant program. In some situations of practice, like a rain barrel is just going to be a rebate. For a soil quality restoration, their ceiling is a thousand bucks, no matter how many square feet that you're doing. But for big HOA or big corporate projects that there gets submitted, they actually have a max award of ten thousand dollars. Recognizing that there are bigger facilities and bigger costs involved. But even that ten K doesn't begin to cover the, even half of what some of these big types of, of projects are. We can mature into that. And my memo today is not here to prescribe what that needs to be in years five, six, seven, and eight. Once we've built up a reserve and proven that we have people who are interested. Think the first part of the project and what this memo really focuses on is what do we do to get it up off the ground? Get it heavily subscribed by people and keep building up this awareness, this knowledge about the kinds of things individual residents can do to. Get better, uh, water resources performance on their yard.
Just a quick follow-up on, on Susan's point. Do we have the capacity, if we're talking about ten thousand dollars in year one, do we have the capacity staff-wise? If we got double that in request where we could make an adjustment and be able to award more?
Award more would be a budget question. Do we have the dollars to do it? Could we make five two thousand dollar awards? Could we handle fifteen or twenty, uh, smaller sets of awards with rain barrels and smaller projects like that? It would be a lift, but I think that we need to do it. And the reason I say we have to do it is that you all made it a priority and we want to execute on that. And the future years after that, if it does become very, very popular. And we realize not just benefits from improved stormwater performance, but good engagement with the community. Then it's a different discussion with the council about how we staff against that project.
Well, I just don't want a situation where we have this huge interest and we have a lot of frustrated citizens.
The proposal.
You make some adjustments if that's the case.
The proposal right now is to take requests on a first come, first served basis. With a max award of two thousand per grant or fifty percent of the project they're proposing.
What's your approval process?
Approval process? Yep. So approval process is outlined in the memo. It would be first and foremost that grants cannot have to be for approved. It would be first and foremost that grants cannot have to be for approved.
I read all that. How does it, is it a committee? Is it an individual? How is it approved and what's the process to approve that? Not the criteria. Is it you? Is it other people? Is it you and Rachel?
First come, first served basis. That's the first criteria. So if you were the first in line, you're the first one we're going to consider. And if it meets the criteria, then you will be getting an award, spend dollars until they're expended. It's all used up. In the future, if we prove demand, then I think it will be appropriate to make a more refined application, kind of a review process. But I will say that even really established programs like the one I used for my own rain garden that includes federal dollars was first come, first served. They used to have the dollars there until they're spent up.
And that makes sense.
To do that.
And the wisdom there is we don't necessarily want to, these are complex things. They don't look the same to everybody. We're trying to make sure everybody has a sense of still some fairness.
Want to make sure we get the full question answered, though. Is it you and Rachel and Doug that are reviewing that or who's reviewing?
Rachel and I would be in the first years reviewing these. Rachel, because she's got the technical expertise to make sure they align with ISWEP or Iowa Stormwater Management Manual agreed proposal. So that's the other part of this. We're not in the science, we're not in the business of telling people what the science is. Although we're going to have thoughts on what is an appropriate thing to implement in a certain spot. And we'll want to talk with folks about that. But we have these established documents between ISWEP and the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual that we'll go to to say, yep, this is an improved type of practice.
You just beg, like having eyes on or asking pictures, they have to do a portfolio, you know, put a recommendation, obviously meeting the criteria. How do you mitigate that?
So on the front end, I don't think we want an application process that's so onerous that we don't get people applying.
Right.
On the back end, one of the requirements is that we do get it to first review the project with them. Affirm that we, if somebody's doing it, that is a good legit person to do it, that they've got a timeline to find when they say they're going to get it done and that they allow us to come and inspect it after the fact.
So that retention pond is not really a pool in the backyard, right?
No, sir.
Okay. Want to clarify that.
I think one thing that's really important on this program, the way it's laid out is, I know, for example, there's a particular project and letter you received on a very substantial investment that was made. The majority of that work was maintenance, removing silt. Now, there is a component of that project where they're actually enhancing the facility, creating a new four bay. The way this program is laid out and the focus has been to Pete's point is if, you know, of course, that's a project that's already been completed. They decided to move forward with their project before we had a grant program in place. And we're going to have to respond back to that HOA and that's something that I'll draft and want to talk with you all about. But they wouldn't be eligible because they've already done the project the way this is laid out today. But if they were eligible, it would only be for the portion of that project that was an enhancement, which I think in their letter was 60,000 of the $200,000 project. Again, we would have to verify that that's truly the case with the plan set that was put together. But just to give you scale on these things, you know, if the council decided you wanted to give the full 10,000 all in one year to that project, it's exhausted at that point. And it's 10,000 of a $200,000 project. So again, scale is going to matter. And in that particular situation, you know, I know the council is very familiar with it and has been asked to come out and look at it. You know, there was choices that were made by that HOA ahead of this grant program. And, and again, that's another example of, in my opinion, an HOA that decided to improve the amenity of the asset they had in their neighborhood, but was a situation where it wasn't necessarily required for them to do so. Now, the enhancement piece is going to be a really important piece going forward. And one thing we'd want to encourage HOAs to do, whether it's that HOA or Country Club Lake or other HOAs to look at those enhancement pieces to make the sediment removal easier in the future and hopefully save them some money. Because again, these assets need to be maintained over time. And Councilmember McCoy's point, there's an obligation that they've taken as part of owning that property to do so. So I just want to make sure particularly for that kind of short term thing that we, communication that we just perceived, how this all fits in to that scenario and and then talk through at some point how we want to, you know, respond to that particular request that the council has received.
These bullets that I have here highlighted, they speak to largely what Matt's talking about. It's not an exhaustive list, but these are some of the core guiding principles that I recommend that are, we follow with our grant program for dealing with requests to make investments in existing private facilities.
Well, I understand the incremental approach that you've taken. I just think the dollar amounts are so small that even to go very far in encouraging the tree planting or rain barrels or some of the less expensive projects, it's not necessarily going to apply all that broadly. So I wonder if we need two pools, you know, one for larger projects, one for smaller. Just.
Well, we have the ability to adjust it, don't we? I mean, it's, it's not set in stone. And I think the intent is to just try to ramp it up and see how it goes over time. And if after the first year we realize, oh, hey, we used up all of our funds too quickly, we can always adjust it. Is that?
I just think we should be careful on the front end to think about what we're trying to incent and be prepared to do that.
So as an example of sort of the walk up, I believe right now Des Moines annual allotment is $45,000 annually, I believe, from our research. They were just featured in the ISWEP magazine because they can't get enough people to exhaust their funds. And they've been doing it as long as anybody has been in the metro. And I don't want to hold them to that number. And I know they work really, really hard at it. And it's not apples to apples comparing Clive to Des Moines, right? We've got some communications reach that they don't necessarily have. But I do want to.
What types of projects are they using?
Rain gardens, rain barrels, soil quality restoration, so on.
No permeable pavers or.
I do.
Projects end up eating up quite a bit.
Yeah, I do. I do believe actually permeable pavers are one of their approved. They take sort of an à la carte approach like we're suggesting here, too. If it's in the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual, then we're going to take a look at it as an appropriate type of project. But we've heard consistently, it takes time to build it up. So we need, we would recommend before, if we're all, if the council wants to get all in on bigger numbers, let's do it. But we're going to need some time to prove that we've got the market and the customers there to come and actually then apply and go after these dollars.
We just need to be flexible. And Susan, I understand where you're coming from right there, but maybe we start off with that $10,000 figure. But, you know, again, if we have a ground swell of.
Why could it cap per project now? You know, it's $10,000 cap 2,000. So we at least get five projects done.
That's what's recommended in the project.
That's the recommendation.
So there isn't anything for the project we're talking about here or Country Club, which is fine, but let's just say that right up front or that it's.
But there is, but it's $2,000.
Well, except in this situation, those projects, for at least for the reserve, would not be eligible because as we outline here, projects that have already started or completed before the grant application is submitted are not eligible.
Yeah, I'm just thinking in the future they shouldn't be looking to the city for much help in the whole scheme of things, which is fine. We just need to be clear that that's our plan.
But that's what, I'll be quiet after this. That's what drives me crazy. I don't get it. If they sign an agreement to develop a property to keep their, their pond has to be X deep. Why are we giving them money to put it into state that they agreed to have it? When they got the development agreement? I mean, just meet code at when you built the property. We're not asking you to meet current code. We're saying put it in the state that it's supposed to be. That's what you agreed to.
No doubt about that.
Now, why are we incentivizing? And the criteria is very clear that we're not, we're not here for normal maintenance or dredging and all of that, right?
I, right.
They've installed a wear system in there to improve the asset. So I mean.
And I'm not saying that's what we're talking about. I'm just saying all these are the projects we were just discussing before. And for inspection and you put it in, and we shouldn't have to give you a grant to go put it back up to the inspector.
The I don't know if everybody would agree with this, but I often am reminded that our government is the art of getting the incentives right. It's painful. As clear as your point is there, and I agree with you that these people have signed up and made these requirements. The measuring stick at the end of the day is what changes can you actually get implemented? And sometimes you can get it implemented by just bringing the stick. But sometimes it takes other things layering with that as well, not to mention all the relationships that we have in that big trust account that we've talked about throughout the night. So that's tonight, our approach to being some of that sort of a pragmatic approach. But your point is absolutely well made, councilmen. And certainly for folks who've made those investments and who do the maintenance work that they're supposed to do, to see other entities not doing that and shirking that responsibility is frustrating. There's a real argument there that they are not behaving in a way that is consistent with the commitments that they've made. And it's not fair that they then create, they get off the hook.
Well, why would we incentivize that type of behavior in the future then? If we're just going to let them off the hook and give them money to deal with it, right? So.
So the trade off, that's a good point on the trade off there. I don't think there's any grant award here necessarily that'd be a size that would really kind of make it feel like they have got to waste, got free. They're still going to pay the big number.
Yeah, fair enough.
Well, it's easy to forget that this is all relatively new for us. We're trying to figure this out. That's why we're doing this. Some things like Michael's points are, those are crystal clear. But there's a whole lot of other minutia that goes into these things that aren't as crystal clear. We're still trying to figure it out. I think this is a good start. I would suggest.
You got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
There's the budget component to this as well. And we, next step for us to make sure with the financial model, we send that to PFM to model that from their perspective as well and see how it jives with what they have already modeled without any changes to the rate structure. So that we can make sure that we actually have revenue sufficient to cover what we're proposing here as well. But what I've heard tonight and what I'm going to need probably some additional discussion about is if we want to start with a number that's higher than $10,000, we need to go back and adjust on the financial models. And we have time to do that. We could do that through the budget process as well. If we want to change up the way that we approach the staffing and that'll already be part of the discussion and Matt's sort of analysis for the bigger general fund and the utilities as well. If you don't want to move immediately into staffing two positions or want to push those out into later years as well, that would obviously change all of this as well and create some new opportunities or a chance to even sort of maybe postpone even further for some of the utility changes for the rate that we've discussed. All of that's still on the table. A great plan is designed to be flexible and a great financial model is designed to be flexible. So we can accommodate those real world changes and the directions that the council wants to take. And credit to Stephanie and her team, we've got a financial model here that allows us to keep making those good projections over time, given all the adapting we'll need to do. Lots here. And I welcome more conversation one on one. Are happy to bring this back also for a future discussion. It will come up again during the budget discussion. Okay. I'm going to fly to this next one that Stephanie put together here, which is dashboards. So at the end of every year now, we want to treat our utility like a growing and maturing business. We want to make sure, oh, sorry about that, folks. Councilman Edwards, I saw your, your look there and said, you're trying to show us here, Pete. This is nonsense. One moment. There we go. Dashboards, accountability. Stephanie, go ahead and take folks real quickly through this. Something that can grow and adapt, but part of our annual storytelling around this and maturing our business with the utility means accountability metrics, progress over time, telling the story about good stewardship throughout the city and more people participating. These are some of the metrics we come up to the line back with the vision priorities that have been set up.
Yep, that's, that's it. So the key performance indicators, we selected these metrics to make sure that we had a way to measure how successful we were in addressing each of the pillars of the vision document. So for the mitigating the effects of hydrology, you'll see the number of infiltration practices installed, number of nature based solutions in the green belt, how we're measuring the sediment removed and the acres of green belt restored. We do have goals for each of these so that at the annual reporting, they will be whether we met goal or we're behind. For the regulatory compliance watershed collaboration and conservation leadership, we have two major goals there of active participation in the Walnut Creek watershed and then continuing to meet our own stormwater management criteria for city projects. And we're measuring that in dollars per cubic feet of treated water. That was something that we discussed quite a bit of how to measure, because obviously we will meet it. But how well do we want to be able to see that performance and evaluate that metric? So that that term of dollar per cubic foot of treated water was something we wanted to see year to year. For flood resiliency, we have number of properties removed from the flood plain and number of nature based solutions implemented that year.
I got a quick question on that dashboard. Just wondering how the information is collected because, for example, on the participation in the Walnut Creek watershed, I know we've had more than one staff person
Sure.
involved in many more meetings than that collectively.
You are absolutely correct. These at this point are just to illustrate the point. So I had to make some red to illustrate the point. You're right. So, so what we are done and what Rachel and I have discussed, this tool is built out, it's an Excel based tool, and we have kind of the entry section where she will put in the metrics of what was completed that year. It'll have the prompts through and then that will be read out to this dashboard so that we can see those results reported there.
So just big numbers for that.
Got it. Yes. For stewardship, we have collaboration events completed and a web hosted education campaign and citizens participating in the cross share program. Clive residents safely enjoying and benefiting from water resources. We wanted to compare the percent of the CIP budget spent on public assets or amenities and the number of stop work orders generated. And then finally, for providing valued services, an approval percentage for the stormwater level of service and approval percentage of the cost share program. And then the participation in educational events of how many residents participated and the total annual resident reported concerns. So those are the metrics that we have selected to evaluate how well we are meeting our goals and how well we are performing year to year. And they will be displayed in the key performance indicator dashboard that Rachel will be helping guide her through the reporting, both for the annual report for the CIP performance as well as the report back to the council for the state of the water resources utility.
Questions, comments for Stephanie, counsel? The discussion all the way through. Okay, what's next?
That's our final slide on the water resources master plan, Your Honor.
That was a long five minutes, Pete.
I really came up short on that one, councilman. But I commend all of you for many, many months now of really digging in on this stuff. It's not easy to get your brains wrapped around it. It's hard for all of us who spend our day jobs doing it as well. So we appreciate all of that careful direction that you've been providing. Thank you very much.
Pete, thank you. Stephanie, thank you for your great work and Rachel as well. Okay, very good. We're going to go to reports now and Pete?
Very quickly, Your Honor. Water related project, a great accolades for my colleague Rachel, who has been elected to the Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership Board, which is a great boon for City of Clive. We participate a lot on with ISWEP. They help us keep our, sort of our water resources house in order with all of the resources they create and the trainings they help provide. And we're happy now to have somebody who will be that much closer to the program and getting that information, but also sharing the Clive way with other folks. This is one of the vision priorities that was established by all of you as we've been going through the water resources master plan. Here's a place where now we have an example of Clive applying that leadership to other communities throughout the state of Iowa. So congratulations, Rachel, on that. Lions Basket Program, the holiday baskets. We've been collecting presents all over. Wonderful, wonderful time with our friends at Indian Hills Junior High. The kids did a nice job getting presents out at Target. And then we were over at Lifetime Fitness, Mercy, and also here at the library, collecting presents this past week. Tomorrow, Saturday is the big day. Come on over and enjoy good camaraderie with folks at the church as usual. And if you've signed up, look forward to your experience delivering those packages to a lot of very deserving families throughout Clive. My family will be actually delivering a couple of those. People are getting together about 8:30 that morning on Saturday morning. We talked already a little bit about Steve the Goat. He continues to make headlines. Quite a guy, that Steve the Goat.
Was he driving a car this time or? Was he driving a car this time or?
Gosh, that's next. That's next.
He has a meme now though, so.
He does have, yes, more to come on that.
TikTok yet?
Just on Twitter, just on Twitter with the rest of goats. Finally, take us back to the earlier conversation. You may recall when residents came to us and said they were concerned about people sliding through the stop at Berkshire, or sorry, Meredith and Berkshire over by Schuler Elementary. Went back, did the support study.
That's Douglas, by the way.
I misspoke, excuse me. Put the stop signs up. Then got a little follow up from the neighborhood. They said, well, even with the little flashers and some of the other things to show people it's coming, we're concerned about people rolling through now. What I was, what we're going to be doing here is not going to be solving the traffic issue. So I want to make sure that I don't state something here that I'm going to have to go back and correct with my colleagues at PW at police, but one more visual cue to folks is coming. The public works team will be going out painting stop bars at all four ways there at the stop sign. So people get another visual cue to stop and then adding crosswalks. And I believe Jeff, those crosswalks are going on the north, south sidewalks. One is the trail that's on the east side of the intersection and the other one's over.
Four stop bars, one at each stop sign, of course, and crosswalks. East to west on the north side and north to south on the east side, golden side where the sidewalks.
Trail, the trail exists. Yeah. So more good case work done for the neighborhood there.
Great update. Thanks, Pete. Good.
Like Susan, I attended the Greater Des Moines Partnership Breakfast. Yes, was it yesterday or a couple of days? I don't know what it was. You know, I think a lot of consensus that the biggest issue that most folks are dealing with is workforce shortages. Not surprisingly, there wasn't a lot of consensus on how to solve that problem. But a lot of discussions about it. And so it was an interesting breakfast. And then a couple of weeks ago, but since our last meeting, attended a really nice ribbon cutting out at the new metro waste recycling facility, very, very impressive facility. And I definitely want to congratulate Mike on that. That's a great regional asset for us. Very impressive.
Thanks Ted. Eric.
Nothing tonight.
Good news, bad news. Just a heads up, when Dark was planning a new facility and they looked at the site and there was some old bones found there of archaeological significance. So that site is probably out of the running and during all this time they're finding, as the mayor has alluded to early about how lucky we are with our public safety facility. Costs have shot up 30% and unfortunately talking about $68 million, I mean, it's, you're talking real money. So they're back on the drawing boards.
Is that the good news, bad news? We're off the hook for 68 million or what?
Following up on the partnership, one thing I thought was interesting was the comment that they want to eliminate the income tax. Forty-five percent of the state budget, right Reverend?
Something like that. Yeah. Well, he, he did say it would take a little time, was going to happen this year, but that, that's definitely something that they are considering is elimination of the income tax. So it'll be interesting to see the specifics on how they plan to do that, but a lot of, I wouldn't say a lot of consensus around that either.
Like a Florida model or something.
Yeah, South Dakota, whatever, yeah.
Also, the comment was interesting, you talk about workforce, workforce housing, housing that at least one representative there thought we don't, we don't need to address that. So anyway, moving on. Speaking of the Public Safety Center and what a grand facility it is, we will be hosting the Metro Mayor's my log sometime in 2022. We're very excited to come see it. So that was a good news.
Thank you, John. Well, speaking of the Public Safety Center, I just wanted to thank everybody again for the, obviously for a great facility and staff for all the work that you did and all of our supporters and partners that helped bring that together. And, you know, up here at this dais, we had to show up. Right? But staff made it work. For our ribbon cutting event, our family night event and for our open house, I was blown away by the number of people that came to the open house. Matt, how many people did we have?
Four hundred plus.
Yeah. I mean, it was just, it was incredible and.
I couldn't get the tours going fast enough. I had to start throwing like 20 people in a tour because our training room was getting full.
What a great show of public support and everybody was just really upbeat. So thanks to everybody. It was just a blessing to be a part of it. Susan, I'll pass it to you.
Okay, just real quick, the Bravo Board is starting to undergo another strategic planning effort being partnered with Baton Global, and I'm impressed with them. But they talked about doing stakeholder meetings and it didn't necessarily focus on cities. And I don't know, Mayor, what your experience had been with Bravo, but it can often tend to be kind of dominated by the private sector involvement. They tend to forget where those resources come from and that the primary focus is about getting those dollars to the cultural partners. So there's a lot of interest in expanding Bravo staff, you know, so they can do more in the community or become more visible as Bravo itself. Anyway, I told the Bravo or the Baton Global representative, I really hoped they would have among their stakeholder groups, a meeting with city officials and both Connie Bosson and I said, it should not be those of us who are already sitting on the board, but some of you to get some genuine feedback. So anyway, we don't need to belabor it, but I wondered if you'd had some of that experience too. And then I didn't want to forget to mention that right after the legislative breakfast yesterday, a lobbyist who was in attendance told me that there is legislation that's proposed to prohibit communities from doing what the metro is doing to try to impose some soil requirements for housing developments. So we should be prepared for that, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be a priority, but we're going to have to educate people on the value of that. So.
It's a brand new story every day, isn't it? Susan, thank you. Michael.
A couple of things. None of you must know that it's Lisa's birthday today because we're still here at nine thirty. I texted her, mentioned you texted. So appreciate that. Home alone. And two.
He was not unhappy that you were still here. I'm just going to say it.
My wife's birthday is yesterday and she left, she's in Mexico City right now, so.
She's been dealing with me twenty-four seven, twenty-four seven for three weeks. So she did ask me the other day, can you go to work for a few hours? But which is fair. Other good news, bad news, and, and he's okay with me sharing this because he, he wants to make sure everybody's aware of things like this. But Dean O'Connor, the mayor of Altoona, had a heart attack. And he was in Nashville by himself in a hotel. How scary, right? So he is back in the hospital next week for another stint. But he's doing well. He was down in my office for a couple of hours and I had the AED close the whole time. But he's, he's back at it. So if you talk to him or see him, it was a close one for him.
Rumor was that he was at the concert last night.
I wouldn't be surprised.
I would, yeah, I wouldn't be shocked. If he was or not. So, but he's doing better.
Michael, thank you.
The only thing I have tonight, Your Honor, is tomorrow I intend kind of due to a number of factors that are going on with, with COVID in particular, and looking at where a lot of the metro hospitalization numbers are at, kind of the highest numbers we've seen in 2021, since the vaccines have come out to the point where it's starting to impact elective surgery services at those hospitals. And with, although we're starting to learn some things every day about the new variant, Omicron variant, there's still some unknowns there and now heading into the holidays. From a staff, from a staff level standpoint, I intend to implement masks for all staff, starting Saturday. So we'll put some notifications out tomorrow. And then that'll start with the library over the weekend, at least through the holidays. Where one of the things that's been a challenge is really tracking, what's the appropriate metric for some of these things? I've really started to focus on hospitalization, particularly metro hospitalizations and where those numbers are trending, right? Right now, we're 150 plus the metro hospitals. That's again, the highest number that we've had in 2021. So I, that hundred number, if we're increasing and we're above a hundred, I think that's something to be concerned about, especially if it's impacting elective surgery, it's impacting other healthcare services in our community. If we start to see it maybe trending back downward, you know, back down to that hundred number and declining, I think then consider going back. I know it's been, it's been a moving target and the staff, our staff is also interested in what's, what's kind of the rule going to be now and and so we're trying to work on that. But at least through the holidays, we've seen a pretty substantial uptick after Thanksgiving. I think I heard from some Polk County communications that the hospitalizations jumped 30 in a week right after the, right after Thanksgiving. And so that's obviously a cause for concern and I worry about the upcoming Christmas holiday and for us, it's an impact to services. And so we want to be, we've had, you know, folks on vaccinated and unvaccinated side start to have some substantial cases. And so from a staff perspective, that's what I'm looking at doing. And so what I wanted to ask too, on the public side, you know, what the council wanted to do with any requirements there in our city facilities. And knowing that, again, we don't have a perfect metric, but we need to work on that and determine what that metric is. You know, when we scale it back, if, if the council wants to ramp some of those protocols back up again for, again, for the public in the building. So would take your guidance or input on that and happy to communicate that out here tomorrow.
You know what our neighbors are doing?
So right now, what we're seeing for the majority of the suburban neighbors is staff requirements for staff to have masks, but not the public, recommended for the public in the building. No, recommended for the public in the buildings and then required for, for staff. For the most part, there's a few communities that are recommended for staff as well, but the majority around us are staff requirements. Again, just in the facilities in the common areas, if they're at their workstation, not having to have it on, but that's been the case, at least the responses that I got here in the last week, that's what I've heard so far.
Do we still have disposables available?
Yes, plenty. We, in fact, we have about 1,500 and 95 masks that we got a little stockpile of. It's over at the PD right now. So we're, we're well stocked on masks.
We still have hand sanitizer there available for the public as well.
Yep, we have everything. We have many of these to, that are happy to utilize. So we do have a lot of, we're not short on supplies by any means.
So Matt, statewide positivity is 12.7?
Well, I think it's.
Tell you because I have.
I think it was this morning, I'm like, on a drive, I was looking at it.
The seven day is 13.1% statewide and Polk County is 12.3. That's the case positive.
Oh, you just have to be nimble, I think with, you know, the, you know, so if you start there, at what point do you go, you know, can we public masks, you know, in, in facilities, right? Is it 15% or, you know, what's, you, you said, what's the metric, right?
And, and to me, I've been more focused on the hospitalization numbers, especially with the new variants. It's again, I don't, I don't have a perfect science for it. Trying to kind of figure it out as I go along, I think for, for me, it's understanding the variant a little bit better here, given that a little bit of time after the holidays and then reevaluating as we get in after the first of the year of you know, where, where things are at. And then, you know, at least for the staff, you know, potentially going back to where we're at today, but not doing that till after the first of the year. Let's get through the holidays and kind of two weeks after Christmas. Especially with the uptick we saw after Thanksgiving, I know. You know, there's been some neighboring agencies have had some pretty substantial impacts to some services and I just don't want that to happen here. So.
Seems like a reasonable starting point. What's the desire of the council?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm fine with that.
You know, I, obviously I'm a little biased, biased on this one. You know, I, I was, most of you know this, I was in and out of the hospital three times in the last three weeks. Went to a doctor's appointment and he literally took me to the ER himself in a wheelchair and stayed there for 10 hours. Admitted me, and then there's a new protocol in the ER that two or more doctors have to come in infectious disease and such and make a decision if you really do qualify. The reason I didn't qualify the two times was because there was no staff. And so using hospitalization as a number scares me because I am one of those numbers that was admitted and they did not have staff, 37% down in nursing that Methodist, 50 some percent down at Mercy. So they can't put everybody in that needs to be in, in a triage, right? It it was scary as hell. And I, I get it. I mean, I'm, I'll say I'm vaccinated, right? And it still hit me that hard. I called the chief and thank you, chief. I mean, it was that scary some nights of figuring out, how do I get to the hospital if I have to this things, right? Writing out things for Lisa. So it's one thing to say staff only. But what's that do, right? You're still the interaction of people without mask and vaccinated and unvaccinated coming in and I don't know, I don't want to get into it all and don't want to change an entire direction, but those are the facts. So where do you use the metrics? I don't know. You're in a tough position because hospitalizations is BS to me. Infection rates show me more because we are putting people in the hospital.
Well, the problem is the positivity rate is, is not an accurate number either. Because so many of them are either asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic. And we don't care if you're mildly symptomatic or asymptomatic. It has no impact. I'm, I don't disagree with what you're saying about the hospitalization rate. But at this point, as far as I can tell, it's the best metric that we have. And because like what Matt's talking about with elective surgeries and things of that nature, that's the only way we can monitor that.
Sure.
So to me, the hospitalization rate and the death rate are what we should be tracking locally here, right?
And I think one other metric to that, that I've also thought about and look at a lot on the state, and I only see it at the state level. I haven't seen it at the county level is percentage that are hospitalized that are vaccinated or unvaccinated. We start to see that vaccinated number get bigger as a percentage. And I have some pause that the new variant is evading vaccines. And I think that's, that's, that's a research that's being done. We're not going to solve that here by any means. But that's another percentage that I look at.
And I told Matt that as well, that everybody knows my position on it. If I see the vaccinated rate increase in a substantial manner, I'm, I'm first in line to say we all need to put masks back on.
In infectious rates or in hospital?
In, in the hospitalization.
See, that's the pro, I mean, again, I'm very biased, but that was one of the criteria why they didn't put me in was, but yet two days later, I'm in the hospital again, having an antibody infusion. Right? And one of the factors was because I was vaccinated. So they were hedging their bet that he might make it through. Right? And so.
Yep, but again.
Vaccinations aren't going.
I get it, Mike. I get it. It's also anecdotal, right? And so, I mean, we got to look at the numbers and the data.
You do have to have a metrics to go by. I get it.
Well, we need some guidance to start with, and I think we have it.
Yep.
So let's move forward, Matt.
I have one question though, and that is regarding our surrounding cities. I do use the Urban Dale Library and I think they have been continuing to require masks the whole time there. So.
The library?
Yeah. I'm, I might be wrong. It might just say, but I think it says you must put on a mask when you come in the door here.
I think it does too the other day.
So you know, maybe just for the library, I know you said that at times it can be difficult for staff to have to deal with someone who does, who fights about it, which I don't understand. I just happen to be one who I just don't think it's a big deal to put a mask on. It's fine with me. Some people don't feel that way.
So I, my only reluctance is putting staff in a difficult situation, but I think to the extent we can, we should be asking people to take that simple step to put on a mask. It limits their expression, a grotlets out into the air that other people are going to breathe in. It's just the kind thing to do.
When does it end?
No recommendation, recommended, mask recommended or.
No, but when does it end?
Yep.
It may not end, Ted, the way this is going.
I get it.
I mean, it's, this is tough deal and we're not going to solve it tonight. We need to give Matt the guidance. We need to step forward through the holidays and we'll come back and reassess it. We could do this all night long.
But you're just saying that because you won't be here.
Matt, what else do you have?
So just so I'm clear, public, staff, all, is that what I'm hearing? Or just recommended for public?
I would say so for the library.
That's sort of makes sure that.
I think what I heard was staff, but not public. Was what I heard public. I think we recommend it for the public.
Change the sign and say.
We have. We have changed it. So.
Yeah.
All right, that's what we'll proceed with. Thanks, Your Honor. That's all I've got.
No garbage delays, is that correct?
That is correct. Yep. So apologies for the discommunication, the utility newsletter. But because of the way that the holiday lands, there is no change in your collection schedule and we've been pushing that out on social media. The good news for us is that there's that gap between when folks got the utility bill and when this actually will be a question in the last week of December.
And we do know of this this message. And so if you have people that have problems, call. And we will try to take care of it if they've messed up.
And we'll advocate for them too and help connect everybody with the right resources.
Matthew, any other correspondence that need to be worked?
Everything was in the packet, Your Honor.
Make sure.
You may drop the gavel.
Counsel, anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, we're going to adjourn at nine fifty two. Thanks, everybody.